I'm going to call the roll now for the Southwest Ranches Volunteer Fire Department Board of Directors Meeting, Annual Meeting. Chair McKay.
Here.
Vice Chair Schroder.
Here.
Board Member Amundson.
Here.
Board Member Hartman.
Here.
And Board Member Jablonsky.
Here.
You have a quorum there.
All right, great. This meeting underway. All right, pledge allegiance, if we can all please stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Mayor, the first order of business is the approval of the meeting minutes from the annual meeting June of 2019.
Okay, if I can get a motion for that, please.
Motion approved.
Second.
Okay, Mayor and Board Member Jablonsky and Board Member Hartman, there's a correction to the minutes that was brought to my attention by our town financial administrator Marty Sherwood. Basically, in the motion to approve on the minutes regarding the stipend reallocation, there's some language that we'd like to change. It's minor language. If you'd like, I can kind of read the proposed change to the motion.
If you would, please.
Sure. So it's going to change to say, to approve a reallocation to the stipend for the volunteer fire chief to $18,000 annually, the volunteer assistant fire chief to $10,000 annually, the station captain to $2,000 annually with the ability to be paid for shifts worked for firefighters. He's got some scribble here, so sorry about that.
That's all right.
Firefighters to firefighters to $100 per shift, and driver, engineers, or officers received $125 per shift.
I amend my motion.
Thank you.
Agreed.
Okay, all right. Any additional input or questions related to this? Seeing none, call the question.
Board Member Amundson.
Yes.
Board Member Hartman.
Yes.
Board Member Jablonsky.
Yes.
Vice Chair Schroder.
Yes.
Chair McKay.
Yes.
Motion passes. Mr. Burns, can I ask you to turn your mic on, please?
Thank you.
My apologies, I thought it was on.
Yeah, I was thinking it was on.
All right, so to repeat, the reports of committee would be next on the agenda. There are no members of the fire advisory board present tonight. Next will be reports of officers. So unless you as the board or Captain Chief Bennett has a report, I don't think we need this one right now. I know Chief has some information he's going to share with you on item seven for new business, but I don't know if you have a separate report. Do you, Chief? Just, you have other things? Not the stipend issue, but other? Yeah, okay. Yeah, okay, yeah. So, all right, so the chief is going to speak to item 7C. So we don't have an officer's report. I don't believe we have any older unfinished business that we've carried forward. So the next item would be the new business for tonight. The first item is approval of the tax return for the volunteer fire department. That's been furnished to you. It's in your agenda backup, and the town financial administrator is available if you have any questions on that. But other than that, we would need a motion and second to approve that.
So moved. Marty, we can't understand you, Marty. You got to get away from the microphone.
Back off the mic.
Back up a little.
Okay.
Too close to it.
Too close.
Much better.
All right, welcome, Board of Directors, public, to our annual special meeting. This is what's your annual meeting. We're going to cover three items under new business. The first item is our tax return. This is the IRS Form 990. I'll give you a little background for the record. It's straight on page 23, for those of you with the agendas. The tells you a little bit about the fund. The volunteer fire service fund is considered a blended component unit of the town of Southwest Ranches. In accordance with general accepted governmental standards and accounting principles, this fund is presented within the town as a special revenue fund. It is officially an IRS 501(c)(4) nonprofit corporation whose board of directors consists of the entire membership of the town council who preside and transact business independently. The fund is comprised of a team of approximately 40 independent professional volunteer firefighters who primarily provide additional fire protection support to the entire town and to lessen the burdens of government by protecting life and property against fire, disaster, natural catastrophe, or other calamity in the town of Southwest Ranches, and when, if requested, also offer mutual aid and assistance to a surrounding municipality or other governmental entity. That tells you about a background of the fund. And moving on to the tax return, this is our, even though it says the 2018, this is IRS works in arrears, extra in arrears. It shows 2018 on top, but this comprises entirely our fiscal year 19 caper. So what I'm holding up tonight is 100% of what's in the caper on pages 45 and 46, except for one, and IRS rules allow you to take depreciation. So the amount of net revenue exceeding expenditures was $1,694 for the fiscal year 2019 within this return. You will see that we were able to file this return timely in February, and I'm proud with your staff of getting it timed. It's the second time in the second year in a row to get it in by the February 15 deadline, and thank you, Mr. Secretary and Mayor Doug McKay, for signing the return, getting the return in as filed. Moving along on the return quickly, you will see on page 11 of 31 is the listing of the board of directors. Our chief is the president. Our assistant chief is the vice president treasurer, and they are still here and still the same officers, and that's why we don't have any change in any of the officers or structure. Finally, in accordance with the last page, which is page 22 of 31, there is a requirement per the IRS rules and regulations, and in the spirit of transparency, we must officially enter what is the motion on the table to accept and approve by the board of directors at an annual meeting. And that's all I have to report on item A, Mr. Secretary.
Okay. Anything else to add to it, or we're good? All right.
The motion approved.
So moved.
Yeah, we've got a motion in a second. Any additional comments or input?
No.
Seeing none, call the question.
Board Member Amundson. Board Member Hartman.
Yes.
Board Member Jablonsky.
Yes.
Vice Chair Schroder.
Yes.
Chair McKay.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you, Board of Directors. Now, the approval of our fiscal year 2021.
I just got to back up, I can't hear him.
It's all buzz. You got to back up.
I'm sorry, it was too loud again. The approval of our 2021 volunteer fire fund, which is, as I indicated, the blended component unit portion, which exists legally and for liability strictly for our stipend and our insurance requirements. That's the primary makeup of the fund, to get this approved within our next year's budget. And to summarize that, first of all, I want you to know that the proposed budget for public safety fire has been addressed and approved and adopted by your fire advisory board back in April and May. So that's all been approved. And if you refer to your page 27 of 31, it's our nice annual color summary, which gives you an overall perspective of the increase. I want everyone to know the total increase for the public safety fire fund is $210,101 for next year, and that includes the 4.5% Davy cost of living allowance of $153,000. So that's a big portion of the overall budget. And all the overall budget will be discussed in our July public hearing process, our August workshops, our September millage and fire assessment public hearing. So the overall budget will also be discussed, but tonight we just concentrate on the volunteer fire components, which is a much smaller component, which you can see is only $233,768. And to summarize it, we're taking a little different approach this year. We also prepared, if I could ask the town clerk, Russell, to put up the slide we have, which basically identifies the volunteer fire component. He'll get that up on the Zoom, and basically, it shows the volunteer fire component has a total increase from last year to this year of $77,313. Of the $77,313, how can you see it in Zoom? How's everybody on Zoom? Can you see it?
Ooh.
No.
It's brutal.
Hold on.
Russell, can you show your screen?
Yeah, hang on, working on it.
Yeah, we just see a bunch of white blobs on the wall.
Hey, don't talk about your colleagues that way.
How about now? Can you see it now, Bob?
Yes, well, we see your screen.
We see your screen, yeah, with documents and pictures.
Yeah, we're looking at Explorer.
Yes.
Have you opened the document?
Yeah, I did.
You're pointing to the wrong screen then in Zoom.
There it is.
There it is.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, good. It's got a yellow hanging on the top. It says variance announced on the Southwest Ranches Volunteer Fire Services. The increase of $77,313 from our adopted budget 2022 to propose 2021. The adopted budget for 2020 was $315,015. The total volunteer components for 2021 is proposed at $392,463. The difference, the $77,313, there's two line items that make up the majority of the increases. The others are small line items, which I'd be happy to answer if you have any question on those. The first item is the reinstatement of our volunteer fire apparatus replacement program. This was put on hold for this year to be able to find our fire assessment methodology study. So this is only a reinstatement of our program, that $39,000. The second item, which is proposed and is part of the volunteer fire tonight, is a proposed increase of a $25 per shift, per person, per volunteer increase going into, starting October 1st. And that increase all in with Social Security, FICO, workers comp is $29,469. Those are your two major items that I'm bringing to your attention tonight in the change. The individual items, I'm welcome to open it up for any discussion, but like I mentioned, the detailed program mods within the volunteer fires will be covered as part of our budget process, our capital improvements. There's a lot of activity happening, which will be part of the budget process, but tonight, these are the two major items we want to address and we want to get approval. So I would like, if it hasn't been done yet, is to have a motion on the floor to adopt the 2021 volunteer fire fund budget by one of the board of directors tonight.
Right, any motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
Quick question, Marty. Number three, increase from various miscellaneous operation line items. What miscellaneous operations?
Well, they are on the detailed page throughout. They're small 5% or 1%, $200, $300. I can meet with you at another time, Board of Director, to discuss the individual line items that are primarily either background checks, let's say, because of the increase in the number of volunteers that we have at three. So they're small spread out rather than list each one individually.
Right. You just mentioned background checks. Isn't that all been, monies were allocated, and is there for them to do that, or we're adding more?
Yes. Well, due to the turnover, which we hope to alleviate with the stipend increase, the turnovers created the requirement to have more allocated to background checks, small amounts. So the, and the full amount that we receive, the volunteers do provide subsidy reimbursement to us, doesn't cover all the volunteer requirements and the town of Davy requirements. So the 3,700, the big portion of it is due to the background checks.
All right. Any other comments?
I just have a quick question, and this really regards Davy, not the volunteers, so I'll be real quick. Andy, has there been any discussion with Davies' unions on reducing from 4.5? I mean, we're all taking hits. You know, where I work, we're not getting raises this year. Bonuses were thrown out the window, you know, in lieu of letting anybody go. Has Davy had any such negotiations with their union, unions?
I don't know the answer to that, but I can say that those contracts are generally negotiated over a long period of time. So I don't know that the union necessarily would have been receptive to reopening those talks, but I'm happy to follow up on that.
Thank you, Andy.
All right, call the question, please.
Certainly, Chair McKay. Board Member Amundson.
Yes.
Board Member Hartman.
Yes.
Board Member Jablonsky.
Yes.
Vice Chair Schroder.
Yes.
And Chair McKay.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And the last item, turn over to town administrator and the fire chief.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Marty. Yeah, Mayor, as I've spoken to you all privately about, the chief would like to speak to you, an opportunity publicly to speak to the board about an increase in the stipends. I know he's put a report together, which we've shared with you, but if it's okay with you, Mayor, I'd like to invite Chief Bennett up to discuss that with you.
Sure, go right ahead. Come on up, Chief. The mic's not on.
It's on.
There's a button on the side.
It was already on.
Was it?
Yep.
We didn't hear it.
All right.
Can't hear it.
There you go.
Thank you. All right, good afternoon, Mayor Council, Board of Directors.
Lee, could you back off a little? You're buzzing away too. Must be these face covers.
Yeah. Is that better out here?
Little bit.
Okay. Want me to get back further? Is that better?
Sounds much better, thank you.
Okay. It's nice to have our meetings face to face again and seeing everyone. We've all been through a lot in the last several months, but we're getting through it. I want to say I'm very proud of our Southwest Ranches firefighters. During the pandemic, they never missed a shift or failed to respond. During the tough times, the Southwest Ranches firefighters on and off duty attended many high school graduation parties, birthday parties, driving by residents' houses and fire trucks with lights and sirens, making a lot of our people happy. You've all received an outline detail for the Southwest Ranches pay raise. I believe it's well warranted and hope to get your approval for the raise. Again, the Southwest Ranches firefighters provide 24/7 coverage. The firefighters work every holiday away from their family, no extra pay. On their own time, fire and EMS training every Tuesday night from 7:00 to 10:00. On their own time, they participate in special events and have always supported all town functions. I want to thank the Board of Directors for always keeping a public safety priority in the town of Southwest Ranches, and thank you. But do you have any questions?
Yeah, why don't you speculate? This is three people per shift, $25 additional.
You're buzzing, dog. You got to back up.
All right, sorry. This is $25 per person per shift increase. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. What is that total for a year? Marty?
We just approved effective October 1st, approximately the $30,000.
So that's it?
But the chief is, the chief is looking to have it start July 1st, which is about $7,800. So rounded, $8,000 is what he's requesting right now to have it take effect as of July 1st.
Okay, but so, but the increase we've already basically approved in the last thing we did, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so that's a, so you would like the increase to start sooner?
July 1st, just for the three months of this fiscal.
Next week.
Next week, okay. Well, what's the council's input here?
So that's a total of $7,000 in addition out of this year's budget, correct?
Yes, that's correct. We could take that from restricted fire control reserve, if you should choose.
That's where I was going with it. So yes. Do we have to vote on moving it out of reserves?
We will do that as part of the minutes when we convene as the town of Southwest Ranches. Thank you, council member.
Okay, that's my only questions. Thank you.
All right, I'm looking for you all's input on the shift from doing it starting July 1st versus October.
If I may, sorry. I don't know, I don't know where to look. No, I have no problem with it. I'm right there with Bob.
Okay.
How come I can't see Del?
Are we all right with July 1st, everyone?
I'm okay with it.
Okay. Dee, you okay with it?
I'm okay with it.
All right, good. When Russell gets back, we'll call the question.
He's busy handing out money.
Yeah, no worries.
How come Del's not on my screen?
I don't know.
Cameraman's shot isn't wide enough.
Oh.
Oh, you're so funny, Bob. Just wait.
No, no. That's not what I meant.
Don't have it on there.
All right.
There you are.
We have a motion in a second, Mayor.
Well, if somebody make the motion to start this for July 1st, I'd be happy to.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Got a motion in a second to start the payment July 1st.
Okay.
All right, call the question.
Please may I, from restricted, restricted fire control reserve, please.
Does that need to be part of the motion?
Okay.
I see you, Marty.
All right, make it, did you hear what Marty said is making part of the motion?
No.
Say it again, Marty, please.
He's muted.
No, that's.
He's not now.
Wrong, Marty.
Wrong, Marty.
Funding, funding will come from restricted fire control reserve.
I think one more time. I don't know if they heard it.
Can you hear me? Restricted fire control fund balance reserves.
Yes, I heard it.
Yeah.
$8,000, $8,000.
Are you expecting a motion from us, Marty? What's, why are you?
He said it's part of the motion.
Okay, got it.
You'd do amend the motion.
Yes, he'd like you to amend the motion to include that portion of it. Are you amenable to that amendment, Board Member Schroder?
Yes.
Okay, and Board Member Hartman, are you amenable to that amendment?
Yes.
So we have a motion in a second. Would you like me to call?
Yes, call the question.
Board Member Amundson.
Yes.
Board Member Hartman.
Yes.
Board Member Jablonsky.
Yes.
Vice Chair Schroder.
Yes.
Chair McKay.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. All right, what do we have next?
That concludes the meeting, Mayor.
Awesome.
Thank you, Chief, for all you guys.
We got to go into our other meeting, so.
Yes. Thank you, Chief.
Your adjournance accepted. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Let us know what else we can do to help. And volunteer fire department, great job. We appreciate it. All right. That's just me. All right, I got to open a new meeting, don't I?
Yep.
Roll call.
Yeah, we can do roll call. Go ahead, Russell.
Mayor McKay.
Here.
Vice Mayor Schroder.
Here.
Councilmember Amundson.
Here.
Councilmember Hartman.
Here.
Councilmember Jablonsky.
Here.
We have a quorum, Mayor.
Awesome. Okay, if we could please stand for the pledge. We appreciate it.
I love the pledge. You can see everybody on Zoom who's wearing shorts.
Awesome.
Mayor, our first order of business tonight, we have Broward County Property Appraiser Marty Care who's on the Zoom call, so he's next on the agenda to address you.
All right, great.
Welcome.
Oh, thank you very much. Can you all hear me?
Absolutely. Hi, Marty.
Hello, everybody. Well, thank you all so much for having me. You know, it is so funny. I was watching the meeting a few minutes ago, and every single time you called Marty Sherwood, I kept thinking you were talking to me. So I almost kept jumping in like, wait, that's not me. It's Marty, it's the other Marty. But it's so good to see you all. I hope everybody's doing well. You know, and I really appreciate, you know, the great work that Southwest Ranches does every single day for the people of Southwest Ranches. I have some pretty good information for you, and I won't take up too much of your time. But, because I know you all have a long meeting, but we do have a lot of very interesting numbers, and I also would love to be able to address COVID-19 and how it affects the assessments for this year and how, also how it doesn't affect it. But first, if I could just, I want to thank the people of Southwest Ranches as well for something else. You know, I was just, you know, reelected as our Broward County Property Appraiser, and so I really appreciate, you know, the support of the wonderful people of Southwest Ranches and all of Broward County.
Congratulations, Marty.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you so much, Dee. Thank you, everybody. I really appreciate that. And right now, you'll see that Southwest Ranches is doing well. And before I go, of where the numbers are, I just want to address COVID-19, just, and how it affects this year's property assessments. So under Florida law, our date of assessment is January 1st. So under Florida law, our date of assessment is January 1st. That's the date that we have to determine the value of all property in Broward County. And we're prohibited by law and the Constitution from going beyond January 1st and using any data that happens after that date. So when the tax bills go out in November, and when you set your millage rates this year on a value, that was the value that we determined on January 1st, 2020. And we had to utilize the data from 2019 to come up with the values for Southwest Ranches and for Broward County. And as you know, 2019 was a very strong year. And on January 1st, when we were looking at that data, that was before this terrible pandemic had impacted the people of our world, our country, our state, our county, and Southwest Ranches. And so this year, as I'll get into, Southwest Ranches is going to see another value increase with regard to the value it'll utilize to set its millage rate on. Now, what I've been telling the people of Broward County is what's happening now, the devastating effect of the coronavirus on businesses and on property itself, will all be taken into consideration for next tax year. So on January 1st, 2021, we're going to look at everything that occurred this year, and we're going to utilize that data in determining next year's values. And I'll tell you what we've seen so far, and this, of course, doesn't apply to this tax year, but I'll tell you what we've seen so far with regard to COVID-19. With regard to residential properties, what we've seen is there's been a decrease so far in the amount of properties that have been sold in Broward County. So usually, we handle about 400 property transfers a day. And that's how many properties get changed hands in Broward County. But over the coronavirus, during the months that this has really impacted all of us, that's dropped down to about 100 to 150. It's now back up to about 250. But the interesting thing about residential properties is even though there's been less property transfers, the value so far that people have been paying for these properties, the market price, the sales price, we haven't yet seen a decrease in those. And so when we value property, it's based on the actual sales, and it's based on the value of those sales and the amount of money that people pay for an arms-length transaction. So if that holds, then come January 1st, 2021, for the residential side, there may not be a significant decrease in values. Now, that could be, and we don't know yet. This is just, you know, what we've seen right now. We're gonna have to look at all the data on January 1st. But there could be a hit, though, when it comes to commercial properties. Commercial properties are valued in a few ways. One, we use the comparable sales method, but we also use the income approach. And we don't, we can't require businesses to share their income with us. But when they do share their income, that also gives us the opportunity to value it based on the income that they generate based on their vacancy rate, all those different things we can use, that we set a cap rate to it, and we determine basically what the value of their property is. And I assume, and you know, I don't know yet, but I'm pretty sure that come January 1st of next year, many businesses all throughout Broward County are going to be sharing their income data with us. It's okay, you can come through. My daughter's actually walking through the house right now, and she's down just brought. So I'm pretty sure those businesses are going to be sharing their income data with us. And as you know, many businesses in Broward County are really just suffering. You know, people have very large vacancy rates, you know, their rent rolls are really down. You know, there's a lot of businesses close their doors, haven't operated, you know, for months. And so when they share that data with us, that's where we could see a significant shortfall next year. And so I just wanted to bring that up because I think that's really where values may drop the most next year in the commercial side. But let me talk, you know, right about, right now, how Southwest Ranch is doing, at least for this tax year. And I'm going to compare it to 2019. In 2019, if you, now, the market value is not where you set your tax rate out, but it's kind of a good synopsis of where the values are for Southwest Ranches, and I think it's helpful to the residents. So in 2019, the market value of all the commercial and residential property in Southwest Ranches was right about $2.376 billion. For 2020, on January 1st this year, 2020, the value actually increased. It's about 4.5% to about $2.484 billion. That's a pretty, you know, hefty increase on the market value of the property. And that's because there's a lot of properties changing hands in Southwest Ranches. A lot of people are moving into Southwest Ranches, and they're paying, you know, high prices for residential properties because it's a place that a lot of people just want to live and raise a family. It's a great place to live. The taxable value is really the value that you're going to be utilizing when you set your millage rate this year to determine the amount of money that you need to provide really good services to the people of Southwest Ranches. And so the taxable value for 2019 was right about $1.467 billion. For 2020, there's been a 6.6% increase to about $1.562 billion. Now, the reason that that value, of course, is lower than the market value is because you have all the homestead exemptions, you have the ag properties, you have a whole lot of different, legally different reasons, whether they're exemptions or classifications that take value off the tax roll. You have longtime homeowners, for example, who have been protected by the SAVR. I mean, that the value of their property couldn't go up more than 3% a year, even if their market value goes very high. And so that's why you have that value. But with that 6.6% change, if you keep your millage rate basically the same, so the millage rate for 2019 was 4.6564, that was the operating millage rate. This could change a little bit because we'll have Value Adjustment Board here, and you never know what can happen. But you'll definitely see additional revenue in the amount of $449,000 or less, depending on what the Value Adjustment Board does. But so you can see that Southwest Ranch is definitely going in the right direction. And what's very interesting about that number is, as you know, the majority of property owners in Southwest Ranches are homesteaded property owners. So the value that they're value, their assessed value couldn't go up more than, this year, I believe, was 2.3%, which is the Consumer Price Index. So even if their market value went much higher, that value was capped at 2.3%. So that basically means that most of that additional revenue is paid for by new property owners who basically came in and made Southwest Ranches their home and because of some new construction. You have right now 2,067 homesteaded property owners in Southwest Ranches. You have 42 seniors who are low-income seniors who get an additional exemption. That basically means they're over 65 years of age, they make under $30,721. They qualify for that exemption. That's another, basically, an additional, almost another homestead exemption. You have, actually, I love this exemption because it really highlights American heroes. You actually have 11 veterans who are totally and permanently disabled that pay no property taxes, and they're fully exempt from taxes because they became disabled while serving us heroically. Those are American heroes. I just think it's wonderful that 11 of those women and men have made Southwest Ranches their home. Last year, you had 46 properties transfer portability value in the amount of $5,149,000. Your, for ag parcels, in 2019, for example, there were 477 ag parcels that get an ag classification in Southwest Ranches, and that was a value of about $215,954,000. That's the amount of value that's not on the tax roll as a result of those 477 ag parcels. In 2020, that actually increased to 484. So it went up by seven parcels that have now qualified for ag for a value of about $222,762,610 of value that are not on the tax roll, that is exempt as a result of being ag parcels. Now, the average single-family home in Southwest Ranches, the market value is about $779,620. To give you an idea, the average single-family home for the county as a whole is $371,902. So the average market value for a home in Southwest Ranches is more than twice the county's average. And the average taxable value for a single-family home in Southwest Ranches, basically, that's the value that you levy your millage rate on, is $547,780. Now, all of your biggest properties that added value to the tax roll were all residential, all single-family homes. The biggest one was a value of $397,000. And then you had three properties that we put on in the $2 million range. And then the fifth was a property valued at $1,620,000. That's just kind of a snapshot of where Southwest Ranches is at this time. I'm, of course, more than happy to answer any questions that anybody has. As you know, I'm a big fan of Southwest Ranches. I just absolutely love the town, and I really, really appreciate, you know, the great partnership that we have with you all, with Andy, you know, with Keith. I mean, it's just a blessing to work with you all. And is there anything that I can answer, Mr. Mayor?
No, I think you've done a great job, Marty. We greatly appreciate it, and it's great to see you.
It's great to see you as well. And so thank you. Thank you very much. And also for the residents, if anybody has any questions about their property assessment, so right now, if they want to go on our website, they can go to bcpa.net. They can, you know, click on Property Search and type in their address or their name, and they can see what their value is for this year. If they have any concerns with that, give me a call, email me at martycare@bcpa.net. That's M-A-R-T-Y-K-I-A-R at bcpa.net. Or call me at 954-357-6904, and I'd be more than happy to go through it with you and explain it to you. And if you have any information that can allow us to reduce it, you, of course, will apply that as well. If you're entitled to a tax deduction you're not getting, please let us know. We want to make sure you get it because at the end of the day, when you pay your property taxes, it should only be on your, it should only be your fair share on your fair value that you're supposed to pay taxes on.
Go ahead, Bob.
Mayor, I've got a question for Marty.
Yes.
Marty, when Andy and Marty Sherwood met with us, they also provided us, you know, regarding taxes and this year's budget, they provided us the taxable value report that reflects most of the cities in the county. And I had a question for you. When I see, you know, Water Hill at the top of the list at a, basically, a change in value of about 12.5% and Pembroke Park and West Park, they're all double digits. Water Hill, you know, it's areas I wouldn't have expected dramatic tax increase, taxable value increases, I guess. What went on there? Did you guys reappraise those areas en masse? Or is there a lot of commercial real estate transactions going on there? What have you seen? Marty's not moving. I think we lost him.
He's on mute.
No, he disappeared. Mila, can you provide an answer by any chance?
Hi, Bob. Keep in mind, there's nothing that's not reassessed. Every single year, we review each and every property. As far as their numbers, as Marty indicated, your residential home average value is just ginormously more than any other city, especially cities like you would mention. But those cities also have a commercial base that is far greater than the town of Southwest Ranches. So there was no assessment project that yielded greater numbers for them. The assessments are done each and every year on each and every property countywide. There was nothing specific for these two cities that the town did not have the benefit of.
Thank you. No, I'm not suggesting we should raise our assessments. That would raise everybody's taxes. But it's just interesting that, you know, some of those areas which have been traditionally relatively depressed. Marty, Mila just gave a great answer for the question I asked, so you're in good hands. Thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you. And Bob, can I ask you if, I only heard a beginning of it, and for some reason I got dropped off. Was the question, when you looked at the taxable value report, was it, why is, you know, Lauderdale Lakes or West Park, why do they have higher values, increased in values?
Yeah, I saw them dramatically increase, and Weston is flat at maybe 4% or 3%.
You know, it's, and I'm not quite sure what Mila said. She answers things so very well. But I'll just give you, you know, my quick take on it. You know, you have a lot of young families, and a lot of people moving to West Park, to Lauderdale Lakes, to Plantation. And they're moving to places where, you know, the homes are also, you know, they're, it's a great place to live, but also the homes at times are a little bit more affordable. If you look at the average median value, the average market value for the county, it's $371,902. But for Southwest Ranches, the average single-family home is $779,000. And so, you know, and which can make it very difficult for a lot of people, and especially young families, to afford. And Weston also has, they're not quite as high as Southwest Ranches when it comes to their market value, but they also have a very high market value per property as well. And so I think that's why at times you see, you know, other areas of the county, for example, where I live in Plantation, can actually have a little bit more of an increase because more people can afford the properties that are there. The other thing is you have a lot of development in a lot of other areas. For example, Fort Lauderdale, which has a significant amount of new construction and high rises. Same actually for Lauderdale Lakes and West Park, where you have, for example, you have, you know, massive apartments, I think, have been built in Sunrise and others. And all of that can kind of drive value where Southwest Ranches doesn't always have those types of buildings that are built, high rises and mega apartments and lots of retail. So that's why you would see a bigger increase in other areas, you know, than, and I hope that kind of, that answers the question.
Thank you.
Awesome. Marty?
Yes.
Mayor, I just wanted to say maybe you ought to bump your budget up so you pay for a little more bandwidth.
Yeah, that's true. I definitely need it, believe me. You know, I felt so bad. I've been looking forward to talking to you all all day, and then it bumped me out. I'm like, no! But I'm really glad I got to come back on. And that was a great question, Bob. I probably was redundant with what Mila said, but I really wanted to answer. I think it's an excellent question, and thank you, Mayor.
Absolutely. Thank you for taking the time, and we greatly appreciate it.
Oh, thank you so much.
Thank you, Marty.
Any additional questions for Marty, or we're good?
No, good.
No, just if you can get money through the state and pass it to Southwest Ranches, we would appreciate it.
You know what? I definitely understand. Well, I'm hoping that, you know, I think all of our cities and our towns, our municipalities, the county, the school board, as a result of this terrible pandemic, I think, you know, there's a very big need, especially, I think, for local governments to provide services. And so I'm very, I will say, I'm very hopeful that the legislature and the governor will, for our purpose, for example, give us, or give all of us the opportunity, local governments, some relief in the upcoming budget year because I think that everybody is really going to need it for their residents. So I am definitely in support of that, and I'll definitely, you know, work with you all on that as well as a good partner. But thank you all so much again. Thank you, Dee. Thank you, Bob. Thank you, everybody. You know, thank you, Mayor. I really appreciate, like I said, the great work that you all do, and also for having me on today. And if anybody ever needs anything, give me a holler at any time. Thank you.
Well, we missed you in the Cooper City Parade, but maybe...
Absolutely, absolutely. And I know, I always like to say this. I think you have just an incredible administrator and a wonderful legal counsel in both Andy and Keith. And also, I'm not going to leave Russell out. Russell is the best. I've known Russell for so many years. He is one, oh, he's one incredible town clerk and just one heck of a good guy. So thank you all very much, and everybody have a great day. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Marty. We appreciate it, and we agree with you.
Absolutely.
Awesome. All right. What do we have next, here?
Next item, Mayor, is the donation from the Sikh Youth Association to the Town College Scholarship Fund along with Shiva Vishnu. So I'd like to call up the Sikh Youth Association first to make their presentation, followed by Shiva Vishnu.
Okay, sounds good.
Hello, everyone. I hope you and your families are safe and doing well during this time. As many of you know, the Sikh Youth Association, in partnership with the Town of Southwest Ranches, hosted our second annual a Rice for Unity and Diversity 5K Walk and Run on February 29. Through this event, we were able to invite over 900 walkers, runners, friends, and family, and have a fun, fun day with food, tents, and interactive booths. By the way, to be honest with you all, we were able to donate to the town's college scholarship fund and inspire and enable the up-and-coming young generation. On behalf of the Sikh Youth Association, I would like to thank the town and its friends for giving us the opportunity to give back to our community. We would like to extend a best thank you to the Sunshine Kids Club, Uncle Louie, and so many others who are essential to making this event as successful as it was. Considering what is going on in our society today, our message of unity and diversity has become only much more important and integral. We would like to continue to walk hand in hand with you all to help and aid in a more open-minded society. Once again, we would like to thank all the friends of the town for their past and continued support as we aim to buy our community one step at a time. We would like to congratulate the scholarship recipients who have earned and have deserved the recognition. We would like to congratulate the scholarship recipients who have earned and have deserved their recognition. Thank you.
So Mayor, they have a check that they want to present to the town. With social distancing, it'll be a little bit difficult for us to have all of you acknowledge it. But maybe if we could just have them turn around, we can take some pictures. If you could stand up on the dais behind them. And I'll come forward and grab the check from them.
That's a good picture right there that we're seeing.
Thank you. Thank you.
That's.
Next up, Mayor, Shiva Vishnu would like to also present a donation that was made to the town to benefit the town's college scholarship fund.
On behalf of the Shiva Vishnu Temple, we are very thankful that we are part of this wonderful cause. I really admire the Sikh Youth Association for taking this initiative. And I'm positive, year after year, it's going to grow bigger and bigger so that more college students will be given the scholarship. And we just want to thank town for everything, for letting us practice our faith on such a wonderful basis. So thank you very much.
Vishnu would also present the check that way. And then we can have the council stand up and take a picture behind them, please. Thank you. Next up, Mayor, we have the town college scholarship recipients. And we didn't really rehearse this, but Kathy, am I reading out the names? And then you're going to bring them forward? How are we doing this? Absolutely. Come on up, please.
No worries, dear. No worries. It's a pleasure to see you.
Can I turn kind of sideways?
Gladly, gladly.
As many of you know who've been here before, this is my favorite night of the year. We have an amazing group of young people in Southwest Ranches. And the kids this year, we raised a record amount of money with a lot of help from a lot of different people, and especially from the Sikh Society. We raised $38,000 this year. And most of you out there have donated to us because we're five women that work really hard to raise this money. And as I look out, I think there's everyone in this room for the most part that I've hit up for something. And you'll see tonight, these are the recipients, these kids. Every year, I say it's my favorite group of kids. It's an amazing group of kids. We have many of our kids here tonight that are getting it. We have a stand-in for a couple of them that are off at college. But I hope that everyone here knows what a big deal this is. We may be a small town, but this is amazing to think that a small group can raise this much money and really give something to our kids. I always say that as a small town, if you can give something to your young residents, they'll always remember it, and they'll come back, and they'll give back. And I just want to give all them a hand, but these are amazing kids here tonight.
Now, how many do we have this year?
We have 16, Mayor, from my count.
So, and then I think if you'll call out their names.
Yes.
And just so you know, if you haven't been here for this before, you don't have to stay for the whole meeting. This part is for you. It's very special. I have a big check outside that we can take pictures with. Have your moment here, and then don't be afraid to get up and go outside and go take pictures.
Mayor, if you'll indulge, I think it's only fitting that we called each recipient up forward and maybe have them approach. And if you wouldn't mind, if the council wouldn't mind, just stay standing. We'll call them up one at a time. They'll take a picture, and then they can go out.
Okay, just like we kind of did?
Yeah, just like we did, just exactly like we did. We'll just call them up one at a time. Yeah, just stay standing and stay standing. And then we'll just call them up one at a time. They get a photo op with the family and the council, and then they can go outside and take another picture with the check. So we sorted this, we sorted the list in alphabetical order. So there's no other emphasis here. With the first person, the first recipient listed is Brooke Giasin. Brooke Giasin. She will not be attending. Okay.
I can't hear you, Kath. Speak into the mic.
Kathy, can you grab the mic when you, that's okay. So the next person, the next recipient is Brandon Harmer. Brandon here?
Yeah, I can get it.
They're in the same order that I call them.
Okay, perfect. Right, are they going to stay here for a group?
Yes, individual pictures, and then they can go outside for a group. Just for social distancing.
That's it?
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
All right, the next person, and this person is near and dear to me because she's our social media intern, Christina Harrington. Would you please come forward? Thank you, Christina. Okay, the next person is Jessica Hartman. And I don't believe Jessica will be in attendance tonight. The next recipient is Caitlin Hodgers. Caitlin here?
Yep. Can we take her picture, please? Her mom's not here. Somebody will just take a picture. Thank you.
All right, the next recipient is Sophia Morales. Congratulations. The next recipient is Amber Saunders. Amber, is Amber here? Hey, I don't see Amber.
She was coming in from out of state, and she might not have made it yet.
Okay. The next recipient is Dylan Saunders. I don't believe.
That's her brother.
The next recipient, also a Mr. Southwest Ranches recipient, if I'm not mistaken, Jashawn Preet Singh.
I got caught up in the moment.
And the next recipient is Sierra Stevens. I believe Sierra. Thank you. Congratulations. The next recipient is Tyler Taparowski.
You know, I think you can make it. Thank you. They'll take your picture.
Okay, congratulations to Tyler. And the next recipient is Carissa Tiano. I don't believe she's attending. Okay, the next recipient is Kayla Torres. Kayla? Congratulations. The next recipient is Ricky Velasquez. Congratulations. The next recipient is Ryan Williams.
Awesome, thank you. You keep that, and we'll take pictures up front a minute.
And the last recipient is Grace Witcher. Grace Witcher. Great. Congratulations to all the recipients. Thank you. And thank you, Kathy, for everything you've done for this.
Absolutely. Thank you. It's an honor.
Move over to her seat. Drink some water. Cool. We're getting there.
Okay, Mayor, the next item is the quasi judicial hearing.
I don't have started a new meeting for that.
No, you did not. I think you'll want to have Keith read the rules of evidence for quasi.
Cool.
Mayor, the next two items on the agenda, which would be items six and seven, are quasi judicial in nature. As you're aware, Florida courts have determined that sometimes you're working in the legislative capacity, creating rules and regulations for the governance of the town. Other times, you're sitting in a quasi judicial capacity in which you are making a decision based on competent substantial evidence, whether or not your code permits or does not permit a certain land development regulation to occur. Item six, which is a delegation request, and item seven, which is a site plan related to a delegation request, are the same applicant and basically dual items. So what I would suggest is that we read the titles for both items and hear them as one item. But we would need two separate motions. But all of the evidence taken in the hearing would be for both items equally. The quasi judicial hearing are in the agenda. Everyone needs to be sworn in for their testimony to be given any weight. And prior to turning it over to the council, we will ask for disclosures on this item as well. So at this time, Mayor, what I would ask is for Russell to read in items six and seven into the agenda. Then we can swear in all people interested in speaking on the item. And then we will turn it over to Jeff Kadam's to make his staff report, and the applicant to address the staff report as well.
Okay.
Okay, item six, Mayor, is a resolution and final order of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, granting a portion of application number DG-23-20 by Archbishop Edward A. McCarthy High School by amending the restrictive note for parcel A of the Broward Central Catholic High School plat from 184,900 square feet of high school use to 200,000 square feet of high school use, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate the intent of this resolution and providing an effective date. Item number seven, Mayor, is a resolution and final order of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving application number SP-72-18 by Archbishop Edward A. McCarthy High School to amend its site plan by replacing its existing 5,820 square feet of modular classrooms with 18,552 square feet of new modular classrooms and expanding the athletic training facility by 1,830 square feet, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate the intent of this resolution and providing an effective date.
Sure, is the item present? Who's speaking tonight? If you could just please go to the microphone, state your name, that you're here on behalf of the school, and that you've been sworn in.
Before you do that, I need to swear in all the witnesses who have not done yet.
Hence why you would say no.
If you would raise your hand, anyone wishing to speak on this matter, including those watching through Zoom, if you would raise your right hand and repeat after me, do you swear that the testimony you are about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, if you could just state your name and that you represent the school.
Tony Massaro, represent Archbishop McCarthy High School.
And Mr. Massaro, you've been sworn in as well?
Yes.
And your colleague?
This is Mr. Richard Jean, principal.
And Mr. Jean has been sworn in as well, for the record. You know why you're here tonight, correct? And have you read the staff report?
Yes.
And have you, do you agree with staff's findings?
Yes.
Okay. At this point, Mayor, I'll do Jennings disclosures. Has anyone on council had any communications, ex parte communications concerning this matter?
Not I.
No.
No?
No.
Commissioner Amundson said no. Commissioner Schroeder, Commissioner Hartman?
No.
And I think Commissioner Schroeder said no. I was reading lips.
I said no.
Yeah, that's what I thought. All right, at this point in time, I'm going to turn over for Jeff Kadam's to enter the staff report. Then we'll turn it back over to you if you have anything to add. Then the public, and then the council.
Thank you, Keith. Also going to add that the applicant's attorney, actually the formal petitioner, is attending virtually. I may start from time to time. I'm struggling mightily with fog. I'll do the best I can. Okay, we're starting with the site plan amendment. They're requesting a site plan amendment for three areas of construction. One is.
If I can interrupt for a minute, Jeff? If you could back away from the mic a little.
Is this better?
Yes.
Great. Classroom building A is a six classroom building. It's a modular building, single story in size, and 8,712 square feet. This building will be removed if and when the originally planned two-story classroom wing is eventually built. There's a north classroom wing, which runs essentially east-west the length of the school. And there's a south classroom wing that was always planned and was originally approved, but it hasn't been built. And there's a courtyard there now where there are several portable classrooms. And that would be the location of this classroom building A, which would be a temporary building. Classroom building B is for 10 classrooms, again, single story, comprising 9,840 square feet. And this would be sited on the west side of the cafeteria, and this one would remain. This would not be a temporary building. And finally, 1,830 square foot addition to the weight training room. The school has 5,820 square feet of temporary classroom space located in the planned location of a two-story classroom wing extension, as I said, shown on the original site plan and still planned for construction if and when funding allows. The modulators, or portables as they are, have provided economical interim classroom capacity. The two proposed modular classroom buildings will increase the number of classrooms on campus from 56 to 73 and will include a large band room. Proposed modular classroom building A, which replaces the cluster of existing temporary classrooms, this is just repetitive. The additional classrooms can support a student body that's larger than the 1,800 student design capacity of the 60 classrooms included on the original site plan. Using the same ratio of students to classrooms, the proposed modulators would increase the school's capacity to approximately 2,200 students. Since a plat note amendment was required for this site plan amendment, staff required a traffic study as part of the application. staff required a traffic study as part of the application. The study found that Flamingo Road between Griffin Roads and Sterling Roads currently operates within the accepted and adopted level of service standard established by Broward County for that roadway, which is Level of Service D, and would continue to do so with the increased student population. An intersection analysis found that the intersection of Flamingo and Griffin Roads currently operates at a failing level of service and will continue to do so with or without a student increase. Finally, an evaluation of the turn lanes into the site found them inadequate to handle the increased student capacity. Several recommendations result from the study's findings and are enumerated in the staff recommendations that I'll get to in a minute. The recommendations fall into three categories. One, limiting student enrollment to 1,800 students, which is the original design capacity of the school, and approximately 100 more students than enrolled during the 2019-2020 school year. Number two, increasing the physical capacity of the turn lanes into the site. Number three, developing and implementing plans to divert more school traffic to the north driveway where the most internal queuing capacity exists and coordinate start and end times with St. Mark's pre-K through eight school immediately to the south. Staff is recommending limiting enrollment to 1,800 students to allow the town to monitor traffic conditions and determine the effectiveness of the traffic mitigation recommendations in this report before allowing additional enrollment and to provide the school with a small degree of flexibility as last year's enrollment was approximately 1,700 students. The site plan modification complies with all code requirements, setbacks, floor area ratio, impervious area, plot coverage, building height, landscaping, and drainage. Staff recommends that the site plan be approved subject to the following conditions. One, execute a declaration of restrictive covenants that restricts the school's capacity to its 2019-2020 level of enrollment, which was 1,700 students, prior to completion and county or state acceptance of the roadway improvements that we're recommending. And subsequently, to 1,800 students and requires regular reporting in a form determined acceptable by the town attorney, which at a minimum shall be the enrollment list 30 days prior to the fall semester and 30 days prior to the spring semester. The town shall be allowed to ask, to seek an updated enrollment list at any time. Number two, revise the site plan to reflect the 1,800 student enrollment cap, subject to the requirements contained herein. Three, comply with technical corrections to the site plan documents pursuant to a technical memorandum. With those changes, with those corrections, to be approved administratively. Four, construct the following traffic mitigation improvements. One, extend the southbound right turn lane on Flamingo Road at the main entrance to the longest distance feasible, which is approximately 450 feet of storage plus 50 feet of taper. Number two, extend the southbound left turn lane on Flamingo Road at the main entrance at southwest 53rd Street for a total of approximately 450 feet of storage plus 50 feet of taper. Number three, extend the southbound left turn lane on Flamingo Road at southwest 55th Street to run back-to-back with the northbound left turn lane on Flamingo Road at the school's main entrance. This improvement includes modifying the existing taper from approximately 175 feet to 50 feet with the remaining 125 feet converting to vehicle storage for the southbound left turn lane. And four, coordinate with Broward County to optimize signal timing at the intersections of Flamingo Road, at Griffin Road, and at southwest 55th Street. We're also recommending submittal of an action plan to the town administrator for directing higher utilization of the north school driveway, particularly during school dismissal to help alleviate traffic backup onto Flamingo Road and improve overall efficiency of the roadway corridor. The plan shall be implemented following the town administrator's approval. It's noted that the north school driveway has approximately 71 queuing spaces on site compared to just 30 queuing spaces for the main driveway. The action plan may be amended by the town at any time to satisfy its traffic and life safety concerns. Recommendation six is to adjust the start and end times of the high school and the adjacent St. Mark's School as approved by the town administrator based on the traffic engineer's recommendation. Number seven, and final recommendation, is retain a certified school safety expert approved by the town administrator to perform a Florida Safe Schools Assessment in accordance with Section 1006-1493 Florida statutes and to implement the recommendations in accordance with the Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School Public Safety Act. In the event that the recommendations cannot be readily implemented, the owner shall propose a timeline to bring the property into compliance, which shall be subject to the approval of the town administrator. So those are the conditions that we're recommending for the site plan modification. They're substantially related to traffic mitigation and with, of course, school safety, the safety of the students being a major condition. And key is that there would be a phased enrollment cap. 1,700 before the improvements to the road or, and the program, programmatic improvements are implemented, and then 1,800 after that.
Okay, and the traffic part of this is to be implemented when?
Okay, all that has to happen prior to issuance of a permit. Okay, no building, no building permit until that happens. The second, the second aspect of the request is the plat note amendment. The plat for the school limits development to 184,900 square feet. The property was plotted in 1997. During the past 20 years, the original site plan was realized in phases, starting with the north classroom wing in 1999, east administration and library wing in 2001, and cafeteria in 2009, leaving all but the two-story south classroom wing built. Over the last decade, the town approved several modifications to the original site plan for facilities that included a nearly 5,000-square-foot freestanding locker room facility, 2,400 square feet of modular storage buildings, and about 7650 square feet of classrooms over the locker room, for a total of almost 15,000 square feet. Given these originally unplanned facilities, the high school now comprises 178,662 square feet in area, which is just over 6,000 square feet short of its original build-out size, even though the south two-story classroom wing has yet to be constructed. In recognition of the module classroom buildings and fitness facility addition, the school will exceed its plat note restriction with approval of the site plan modification they are seeking. Those improvements would increase the size of the high school to 199,044 square feet. The school cannot construct these improvements unless the council and Broward County Commission approve a revision to the plat note. And for anybody who doesn't know, all plats have a restrictive use note on them, and nothing can be built in excess of that number unless that restriction is amended by the local government and Broward County Board of County Commissioners. Since the school still desires to build the south two-story classroom wing at some future date, the school is requesting the council approve a plat note revision that accommodates both the improvements requested in the site plan modification and a future 27,258-square-foot classroom wing for a total area of 217,590 square feet. Note that modular classroom building A, proposed in the site plan modification, will be removed if and when this permanent classroom wing is built. The proposed plat note amendment increases the school's permitted floor area by almost 33,000 square feet, of which 18,456 is for the future two-story classroom wing. Since the staff recommendations for approval of the site plan modification limit enrollment to 1,800 students, it is unlikely that the two-story classroom wing and its estimated 20 additional classrooms will be constructed with the student enrollment cap in place. Staff therefore recommends limiting the plat note to accommodate the current proposed site plan modification only, resulting in a plat note rounded to 200,000 square feet. And that concludes the staff recommendation. Back to you, Mayor.
All right. Anybody got any additional questions?
At this time, we will turn it over to the staff, to, sorry, the applicant for the applicant's presentation. Then we can ask, we can ask questions either. We'll do it that way to speed it up a little bit. Does the applicant agree with the staff report and the conditions of approval? The answer is yes, for the record. Do you have a further presentation to make, or are you just standing on the merits of the staff report?
Standing on the merits of the staff report.
Okay. Then at this time, Mayor and council, does any member of the council have any questions of the applicant or of Jeff Cadem's at this time?
I do.
Yeah, I do too.
One of my questions is the, how are you all affiliated to St. Mark's, if I can ask that question?
We're owned by the same entity, Archdiocese of Miami.
Okay. So I drove the property a couple of different ways, both properties. And I'm just curious why you wouldn't access the road that you can go all the way around both property? It's not part of the car loop. Back together, but you can, you know, one side go literally all the way back in the back of St. Mark's and across and around and back up by the, your ball fields all the way up to Flamingo. If that were open.
Be honest with me, I'm trying to picture what, where are, where are you entering from?
I was entering from Flamingo on the, on the south side of St. Mark's.
So you were entering that light.
I was trying at that light that's right there and went straight back to the parking lot, all the way to the back of the property, and then made a right, and it's, it's not really open and connected right there, but it'd be easily done that would in turn go behind St. Mark's and around your own property. I, I, I was looking at it as a lot more staging area for you, for cars, to get them off the highway because a lot of the problem is the traffic on Flamingo. As you guys know, I'm preaching to the choir.
Right. I, my guess would be, because as the drop-off, you're dealing with kindergarten to eighth grade from St. Mark's, and then you're dealing with high school kids that are possibly driving themselves to Archbishop McCarthy. And, and possibly, my, my thought process is a time change.
Are you guys, so the school is in and out kind of at the same time period, or a little different?
St. Mark's starts a little bit earlier than we do.
Okay.
And, and they have more parent drop-off than, obviously, all their kids are dropped off by parents. And ours is a combination of parents and kids driving.
Okay. But your kids drive and have parking places there, I'm guessing?
We have parking places on the south side of the school. There's over, I think, 600 parking spots.
So the students that are driving have parking?
Parking.
Okay. So they fit in a little different category?
Correct, yes.
Okay. All right, I'm just trying to brainstorm with you guys as far as addressing some of this traffic, knowing you guys are somewhat affiliated to find a way that, that works moving forward that might be helpful to you that you already have kind of built.
Right.
How many parking spots are they going to add for students?
We're, we're not, I think we're, we're within the allotted enrollment as far as parking spots. If I'm not mistaken, I think we have over 600, including faculty, which park on the north side of the school. We're still within the code. Am I correct, Jeff, as far as the amount of parking for student population?
Correct. They're, they're not adding any parking as part of this site plan modification, and they're not required to under the code.
Okay.
Bob, you had trouble?
Yeah, 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 just to be specific, it looks like they've got, they're going from the need of 527 spaces to 544, and according to the documentation here, they have 629. So with the limited of, a limit of 1,800 kids, they'll, they'll still be more than 100 spaces underneath, or about 80 spaces underneath what they need, so. So Jeff, from time to time, when I-75 is closed, I've got to take Flamingo Road to my job. And, you know, sometimes I, I, I come home early and I'll, I'll hit traffic on both ends. I've, I've experienced traffic at the beginning and the end of their day. And one of the things that becomes a real problem is, and I'm just trying to understand if we're correcting the problem through the changes in the car loop that you're talking about and changes in the lane size. You know, at times, they'll back up, I don't want to say halfway to Griffin Road, but it, it sure feels like it. And then the traffic that's coming up from the south would be blocking the left lane where the turn lane is to, to get into the school. Are we trying to remediate that? Because I like Doug's idea. Let's be creative and see how we can snake the car loop around the property if possible. But do your recommendations address the amount of traffic that's actually impeding traffic on Flamingo Road?
Yes, Councilmember Hartman. And we have the, the, the traffic engineer that the town used for the particular study in this case. And he's available on Zoom for any technical questions. But some of these recommendations include extending the southbound inbound right turn lane, which is going to help bring cars off of Flamingo Road by extending that turn lane. By having the school use, put more reliance on heavier usage on the north driveway, we're getting those cars off the road faster. Because right now, there, a lot of them are using the main entrance, which just doesn't have the queuing capacity. And the same thing with northbound traffic. We're taking those, those cars off, off of the travel lanes, the through lanes, by extending the turn lane feeding into the school from the south. So all these things, including signalization, tweaking at the intersections and the turn lane improvements, as well as all these operational improvements are all designed to keep traffic flowing on Flamingo much more smoothly during pickup and drop-off.
Well, let me jump in here and add to that. You all have had some stupendous police officers directing traffic.
Correct, yes.
The dilemma is, when they take vacation or go on break, the other guys fill in, don't know it as well, and you have a calamity of traffic issues. But when your guys that are on their game and know that, and the regular ones that are doing it, that traffic problem is not, not only is noticeable when those guys are running the show. So I just want to clarify that you guys have some great guys who've done a good job at periods of time. But when you don't have the right fill-ins, or they don't know the procedure there and the count, it, it's as if all hell broke loose. So...
It's like a substitute teacher.
Yeah, yeah.
Or substitute male.
You didn't interrupt, but...
No, exactly. Listen, we're, we're on the same game. We're fighting the same fight. We're trying to, to make it work for you and work for us, you know? The stacking and extending of the turn lanes and stuff is all great stuff. But if you got the wrong guys out there directing, it's helpful, but not helpful enough kind of thing. So that's why I was coming up with, thinking outside the box about that additional area that you have and then coinciding with the neighboring school if it's different times. I'm just putting out there to brainstorm moving forward so you guys maybe at a lesser expense come up with a better solution kind of thing and be helpful. One other thing I want to clarify that I had some neighbors call me about and had high concerns. To my knowledge, there will never ever be an entrance or exit or access from the rear of the school through the ranches.
No, because to my knowledge, even though the Archdiocese owns that property, it's zone residential. It's not commercial, so we haven't even, even remotely discussed that possibility.
Okay, I just wanted to clear the air on that to make sure there would never be asking for a driveway entrance or exit to the rear of that property through the ranches. Everything will go to...
The other thing we have to look at is the safety, security issue of our students, you know, we...
That keeps it intact better, not having that.
We have cam, we have cameras on campus. We don't have cameras behind us.
Right.
So we, we have the ability to see what our kids are doing, God's eye, let's say, when they forget.
Okay. All right, anybody else have, go ahead, Gary.
Hey, Doug, I wasn't finished. I had a couple more questions for Jeff.
I'm sorry, Bob.
Oh, no, no problem. Jeff, item number seven of your recommendations. I'm not familiar with the Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School Public Safety Act. Maybe what you can do, and also the statutes that are cited. Can you just give us a thumbnail, you know, at a real high level, what that means? And also, is this something we would normally put into?
is this something we would normally put into an agreement or did somebody ask for this?
Okay, I'll answer all those questions in turn. Uh, the, the gist of, of the various, uh, statutes with, with regard to school safety that resulted from the Parkland shooting is, uh, access control, hardening, physical hardening of the building, um, regular drills with, uh, emergency responders and, and bringing the emergency responders into the school to work together to come up with a plan. As well as, uh, student reporting programs, um, uh, you know, when they see something suspicious. So it's a, it's a whole series of things, uh, that did result from the Parkland shooting uh, and were amended, uh, when the public, the Safety Commission composed of, uh, various sheriffs and other law enforcement, uh, officials and security officials, uh, dissected the Parkland shooting and, uh, came up with a, a whole list of recommendations at the legislature, um, then put into the legislation. And so your second question, um, public schools, if this was a public school, which includes charter schools, um, they would be required to do this as part of the act, but private schools are not subject to these requirements. So, uh, we're recommending this to put the high school in the same safety category uh, and taking the same types of measures as public schools are already required to.
Good. Final question. Thank you, Jeff. Now I understand. Um, so the recommendations that, uh, that have been crafted here to better control traffic, do we have any mechanism for true up such that if, if the, if the, 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 uh, recommendations still allow traffic to pile up on Flamingo, let's say the turn lane needed to be another 30 or 40 feet long and room, room permits, do we have the ability to go back and ask them to accommodate the traffic, um, you know, more effectively than whatever the plan is today?
Well, the, the improvements that we're recommending are pretty much is everything they can do with regards to these turn lanes. We're, we're asking them to extend them as long as they can possibly be extended.
Keith wants to. Yeah, Councilmember Hartman, if you look in condition for on the resolution, the last line, is it five? Uh, yeah, where we said the action plan may be amended by the town at any time to satisfy can life safety concerns. So the quick answer is yes.
I do want to point out though, that the action plan is an operational plan. So, uh, when it comes to greater utilization of the north driveway, um, coordination of start and stop times between, uh, uh, St. Mark's and the high school. These types of things, yes, um, those are things that we can tweak, um, based upon the results we're seeing. But the physical improvements are, are the maximum improvements, uh, that can be done for each segment that we're, we're focusing on.
So then by extension, if, um, it, it reinforces the need for the cap of 1,800 students because if we did allow more students in, um, uh, to be, to be added, then we run the risk of putting the students at risk by not having enough, uh, turn lane capacity to keep them off of Flamingo Road.
Exactly. And that's why we have that, that student enrollment cap here. Um, once all of these improvements are, are open for traffic, once these operational plans are, are in action and they've been tweaked as needed, uh, we can always monitor, um, you know, how smoothly everything's going, uh, for any future requests the school will have. Uh, I would expect that, uh, clearly, uh, when they do come in for the permanent two-story classroom, classroom wing, they're going to want an increase in enrollment at some point in time. Um, I do understand that, uh, a lot of the capacity they're adding right now is to thin out classes, which are a little larger uh, than they like, which are not very competitive, given the, um, the private school, um, conditions today. Uh, but at that point in time, uh, we can look at it and see how these improvements, uh, have worked. And, uh, what if any additional capacity the school could handle at that time?
Very good, Jeff. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Gary?
My turn. Thank you. Just want to add some general statements. Uh, I'm okay with the, uh, 200,000 square foot capacity and the 1,800. Um, but something I think that is very, uh, important to our town is items four, five and six. Uh, dealing with the traffic, obviously we've been talking about it, but more so I think they need to be implemented first. Before any other construction takes place or.
They can't get a permit until they do it.
Yeah. So I want to make sure that that's crystal clear. That has to happen first because that's, that affects our residents greatly. And so I, I just want that understanding, you know, to happen.
Yes, and Councilmember, the, uh, the applicant's fully aware of that. Uh, the, just the permitting alone for these road improvements is going to take months. Construction is going to take months. So they, they're aware, um, that there's some work to be done here.
And Councilmember Jablowski, just for the public's purpose, who, who may not have read the resolution, the last line in section two, uh, makes it clear that all of these conditions that Jeff wrote into the record must be satisfied prior to the issuance of a building permit for any of the proposed improvements.
Good.
Are we opening this up to the public?
We are.
Okay.
All right. Anybody else on the council have any other questions? Go ahead.
Did, did the gentleman have to stand for this entire thing or can they sit?
They may sit if they like and come up.
I'm just saying.
But if you're asking questions to them, they're going to have to get up. So.
Oh, okay. I get you.
All right. At, at this time, Mayor, we'll call on the members of the public who wish to speak. They still need to be sworn in. Uh, they are limited to two minutes per, uh, person who wishes to speak. Uh, I guess, you know, you may want to start with the people present in the room first.
Yep.
Before going online.
That's fine.
So in the room, I see David Sears wishes to speak. So if we can start with him.
He's been sworn already, I think. I saw him stand.
David, if you could state your name and address for the record.
David Sears, 5501 Southwest 130th Avenue. Um, I have a concern as being a neighbor to, uh, Archbishop McCarthy. If you look at their drawings, their drawings say that there's going to be future athletic practice fields on the residential spaces there. So I'd like to add that condition that they'll never be able to ask for that. They also have future practice tennis courts and basketball courts, which I don't think we should allow them to have. If we already have a traffic problem, you're going to increase them to 2,000 students? I don't think that's a smart idea because then they're going to be over the parking capacity that you guys asked a question about. Also, they have a driveway that goes all the way back, backed up behind their practice fields. And they can come in through the south parking lot and you can stack vehicles all around there. They already had this and they didn't do anything about the traffic. Moving one further than that, they have to put modular buildings. In 2016, this council approved them to build that two-story on the south side of the property, August 25th, Jeff. And they approved them to put that two-story there. And now they approve them to put in modular buildings again when they had removed them the first time. I will state that they will never use a back entrance. They'll not put those. That needs to be done as part of that. Thank you.
Do we want to ask them this?
We want to do that at this point. Uh, at this point, I want to ask if the public wishes to speak.
Keith, can you move back from the mic a little bit? You're all buzzing out.
Sorry about that. In council chambers, we have David Kozinski.
David Kozinski, 6411 Holliday Trail, President Sunshine Ranches Homeowner Association. Uh, Mr. Sears has valid point about the traffic coming in from the backside and those practice fields, um, football. Um, so those are big concerns. Um, Mr. Mayor, uh, when you had mentioned the, uh, possibility of traffic coming in from the south side of, of the church, St. Mark's. But that actually makes a lot of sense because the way the traffic pattern is proposed, and my, my understanding is you're going to have the traffic from both the north and the south funneled into one, one lane. If they got traffic coming from both lanes, you're going to clear out that traffic much faster, keep it on their property and then disperse it. It'd be less congestion on Flamingo Road. Um, I did speak with several, uh, the neighbors and none of the neighbors actually had any objection to the modular buildings. Um, that concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public who are present in council chambers wish to speak? Seeing none, public comment in council chambers will be concluded. We'll now go on to virtual and I'll turn it over to Russell.
Mayor, it looks like we have at least, uh, two people raising their hand. I see the first speaker. I want to say, I believe it's, uh, Noel Hollingsworth. I'll call on him first. Mr. Hollingsworth?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Uh, I have a couple of things. Number one, uh, as, uh, the mayor was saying on the west, that doesn't want any driving, put a no-drive line there on the entire west side of the property. That'll take care of that. Number two, they've come before us about every two, three years, uh, for increases, new plans, et cetera, et cetera. Not this time, but the next time they come before us, put in there that they need a complete build-out plan for the entire property. Therefore, that would give the design and future layout of all buildings, uh, athletic fields, et cetera, et cetera. But, uh, which is on a finite property size and building ULDC limitations. And therefore they'll, will know what the size of the property needs to be because it's finite. We'll know the size of the building square footage and we can do that one time. We won't have to do this every time. And because you've only got like 1,400 square feet left over now. So they'll be back next time for another increase. And it'll keep it from becoming a hodgepodge and helter-skelter buildings. The other thing that I have on this is, uh, they were talking about the turn lanes on Griffin Road. The turn lane, will it affect the town entranceway park if that is extended coming from the west, making a right turn onto Flamingo? That is, but Russ, that is all of my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hollingsworth. The next, uh, speaker is Joe Kilcullen. Mr. Kilcullen?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Fantastic. Uh, my name is Joe Kilcullen. I reside at 5290 Southwest 130th Avenue. Uh, my property butts up against the retention pond located to the northern end of the property in question. Um, my point here, which has been, uh, essentially, uh, covered in a couple of points, but is the greater view that an 1,800 person, uh, limitation that is being asked is a 5.5% increase over the student body. So the lane changes that are being made on Flamingo were made in conjunction with the study saying that it was to limit to 1,800. Yet I heard the percenters for the high school state that they're talking about going up to 2,200. So the thought is, are the lane changes that are going to happen on Flamingo going to allow a capacity of an additional 400 students? Or is that something that would not be able to be executed by the high school? So five and a half percent doesn't seem like that many more students, but add on to that, add another 400 students and now your volume may exceed the recommendations of those turn lanes. So I'd like to have that addressed in terms of the stacking of short-term and long-term thinking by those, uh, by those changes to the traffic.
Good question.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kilcullen. Mayor, that's, uh, that concludes the, the virtual speakers.
Right. At this time, uh, the public session is closed. Uh, Mr. Cadens, would you please, uh, do a conclusion and address any questions you can?
Sure. I heard, uh, four comments, uh, questions that I'll address. One is the, the proposed athletic fields, um, on the, the west side of the school. Uh, those, those are not in the quote-unquote residential portion of this site. They're within the boundaries of the site plan that have always existed for the high school. And in fact, these athletic courts were approved numerous times, starting with the original site plan and every renewal thereof that they've had. In one form or another, they've been there in that corner. So that's not really changing anything. Um, another comment that I heard was, um, um, that access uh, on the very western perimeter of the site, uh, west of the track was not desirable. Uh, that's not been proposed. Um, the school hasn't proposed using that, uh, as part of their recirculation. Uh, and again, the town administrator has to, is going to approve any recirculation plan that the school presents. Um, really, we're not trying to get them to use that. We're merely trying to get the north driveway moved, used more than it is now with the existing drop off and pickup loop. It does not involve the area west of the track. Um, I heard a comment about, uh, requiring a build-out plan that is finite. The school, it, it's an organic entity, you know, they, funding, funding comes in waves, needs come in waves. They have, they have largely, um, stuck to the original plan. A lot of their requests have been for these temporary modulators, which, uh, they've asked for because they haven't had the funding or the the need yet for the full two-story classroom wing. As well, yes, they've asked for some storage buildings and they've, they've, uh, reutilized, uh, and, and done some clever additions and utilization of space, but you know, it's an organic, uh, um, creature, this high school, and, uh, I think we should be able to accommodate, uh, those needs as they evolve, as long as they're, as long as they don't, uh, negatively impact traffic and compatibility with adjacent residences. And then the, the fourth comment I heard was whether these, uh, turn lane improvements and other operational improvements were being designed to accommodate 2,200 students. And the answer is they're not. Uh, they are being, they're designed to, uh, alleviate backups that exist now uh, as much as possible, doing everything that we can to alleviate those backups. And as we stated a few times, the student capacity cap would be 1,800 students, period. So if the school wants to, uh, increase enrollment beyond that, they would have to come back to the council. And that would be at a time when you can see how traffic has been flowing with these improvements and, and all the changes that they've put into place.
Thank you. Does the applicant have any concluding remarks? And seeing none, uh, Mayor, at this time, I'll turn it over to the council for deliberation. Once again, these two items are quasi judicial in nature. Uh, it requires five unanimous votes of the town council, five votes of the town council. There are two items here. Both of them would have to be voted on separately. And if a motion to approve is made, it would, uh, we recommend that it would be subject to the staff condition.
So moved.
Let me wait a second.
Second.
Okay. Any additional comments from the staff, from the council?
Can we add in there that, uh, it'd be that the back of the property where they were going to put a ball field or whatever, that there will never be an access to go internally into the town? Can that be added?
Is it already in NBA?
What?
No interest or an ingress from the rear of the property into the ranches. I think.
Sure, but I could tell you by the same, you can look at it the other way. They can't have one unless you approve it. And any, any condition you put on this can be.
Changed later.
Changed later. So, uh, so there's no harm in adding that, but that, that you would have to approve it. They can't just add an access. Uh, we wouldn't allow it and they can't add one without council's approval.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I, I, I actually thought I heard earlier from one of the gentlemen that it's their intention not to open up that back area for safety purposes, safety purposes of all the students. So, and that in conjunction with what the gentleman has just said, Jeff, I, I don't see an issue.
Okay. All right. Well, like they said, it would come back before us anyway, but a, at this point, there's no access and won't be any looking down the road. So.
Got a question for Jeff.
I would add.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
So Jeff, they're putting in basically in the public school vernacular portables. And at some point in time, they may, you know, when times are better and the coffers are, the coffers are a little deeper, come back and want to put up that wing. With a cap of eighteen-hundred, their wing would be limited to exactly replacing what they have. They couldn't put a bigger wing on than what they've asked for. Previously, they can't even put a wing on that would, well, they can't put a wing on that would exceed the capacity of the portables that they'd be removing. Is that correct?
No. And the challenge here is correlating square footage with students. You know, there's, there's no golden ratio, as it were, because class size matters. And how you utilize your class, your classrooms matters. So they would actually be adding with that, with that future wing, they, which they have come back to the council to get approval for. But it would, classrooms, there would be a net increase in the number of classrooms. It would not strictly replace the port, the modular that they're asking for. However, this eighteen-hundred-student cap would still be in place unless council extends it at that time, at that future time.
Okay, good enough.
There, there is one thing, and, and I, I turned to Jeff and said it. If it is the desire of this current council to restrict access from the rear and, and the applicant has already stated that they are okay with that, that they would not access from the rear, I would add it in as a condition eight on this resolution because I think legally, you could look at this later on and say that these improvements would not have been approved for that stipulation that the property would not be accessible from the rear. So I won't add it in today.
Good idea.
Yes.
So whoever made the motion in a second, let's modify it.
Why don't we go ahead and put it in the, in the, in the agreement and the deed restriction?
We'll do both.
Okay.
Okay, so, go ahead. How we redoing this?
We're gonna add in a, a number eight to the resolution dealing with the, is that the site plan? To the site plan, saying that there shall not be ingress or egress from the rear of the property. And that language will also be mirrored within the deed restriction as well.
Correct.
Good.
Yep.
Good.
Hey, can I?
Go ahead.
Question for the applicant, just came to mind. Is that permissible?
Yes.
You have, the archdiocese has residential property, is on residential on the west side. What are your plans for that? What are your plans for that property?
Can they come up to the mic?
Okay.
No, we, we don't have any plans for it.
Discussion, not a, okay. I believe the attorneys representing the applicant, I think, wanted to say something, so.
Okay.
Hi, Suzanne Dougherty, address one-ten Merkway, Corral Gables, Florida. I'm the attorney for the Archbishop of the Archdiocese of Miami and McCarthy High School. I was just gonna confirm, there's no plans for those residential parcels. On behalf of the Archbishop at this time.
Is it all one parcel or is it different parcels?
They're different parcels.
She said they're different parcels.
Well, I'm just wondering because if they, if it's zoned residential, maybe they want to put some residential home, you know, for staff or whatever, that, that's where I'm going. That's what I would want to know.
There's no immediate plans to my knowledge, so it's, it's not even being talked about as far as I know.
Jeff, I'm looking at the partial site plans that are here that lay out the property as it is today with the amendments. I don't see where that residential property is. Could you describe it?
Yeah, if you look at, if you look at, the best way to do it is to look at sheet A1.
Or BCPA.
But if you're looking at the site plan, sheet A1 shows an open green area on the very west side, the very left. And that does not have, as far as I know, community facilities, zoning or land use. And then there's actually just north of that is where I believe a pastor lives. It's actually owned by the arch, the archdiocese and plotted for one single-family residence.
So if the archdiocese, if the archdiocese decides they want to sell those lots, are we restricting them from egress into Sunshine Ranches so that if they sold it to somebody who wanted to build a house or a couple of houses on there, they'd have to enter and exit through the, the, the school campus?
No, the thing is that there can't be any access to the school property from anywhere but Flamingo.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Okay. Any additional discussion or do we need a new motion?
Motion is second, as amended, including the staff conditions on the first item, so you could vote on that and then the second item.
Motion?
Well, Keith, can I?
We've got one, hold on.
The, the, my understanding is the motion and the amended motion was for the site plan, which is item seven. Do they apply to both six and seven or just seven?
They have to vote on both. They could do it either direction. It sounded like they were voting on seven first, so I just went with it.
Right, okay, so seven is the one that has the amended motion and six will be more, okay.
Okay, so we've got a motion in a second, so call the question.
One other item, one other.
Okay, go ahead.
Keith, the amendment wasn't explicitly stated. I want to make sure that motion also includes all eight staff recommendations now. Correct?
I thought that, but
When the amendment was made, it wasn't said.
Who is the maker of the motion?
The maker of the motion was Councilmember Hartman, so, Councilmember Hartman, do you?
And I accepted the amendment.
And he just wants to confirm that you are including all the recommendations of staff.
I accepted the amendments, yeah.
Okay, and council, and Vice Mayor Schroder, you accept that for your second as well?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right. Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion approved, passes five-zero.
So now if we can approve item six the same way.
Need a motion in a second, please?
Make a motion approved.
Again.
And is that also with all?
That doesn't have.
Doesn't have, okay, no conditions, okay. All right, so we have a motion in a second.
Call the question.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes five-o.
Congratulations, gentlemen.
Yes. Good luck with your plans.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Okay, we're up to public comment, Mayor.
Okay.
We have four speakers in attendance, Mayor, that wish to speak.
All right, well, let's do in attendance first and then we'll go to internet.
Okay.
Mayor, public speakers are required or allowed to speak for a maximum of three minutes each. The next thirty minutes are devoted to public comment, so that time that the initial public comment section would end would be nine PM. And then, as always, we would take it back up at the end of the meeting for anyone who didn't get to speak.
Okay.
Okay, so the first speaker, Mayor, is George Kalas, followed by David Sears. I think Mr. Sears spoke on another item. Okay, oh, he's still here. George Kalas first. Go ahead, Mr. Kalas.
George Kalas, six-seven-two-one Hancock Road. I think you all know what I'm here for.
Can someone make sure that mic is on? Can you check?
It's on, we can hear him.
All right, just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Okay, in, in reading the, the June Southwest Rancher, it's all about hurricane awareness. And I'm reading parts of this that says the, do not trim your trees and if a storm is imminent, these items can be missiles during a storm and can cause severe damage or worse. Well, as you all know where I live and you know I'm south of the high-tension wires. And as far as missiles go, there's five-hundred to a thousand truckloads of missiles sitting, laying there, waiting for a hurricane to blow them around. Besides that, there's also a fire hazard, spontaneous combustion. I think you all know what that is. And that's, free trims and, and mulch, just sit there. Nobody moves them, they're just sitting there. I don't know how long you're gonna allow all this dumping to go on. I'm not trying to take the guy's license away or his ag exemption, but I think somebody should really look into this and get it stopped. As far as, there's boxes, drums, wheelbarrows, plastic pipes, wooden boards, chairs, buckets, tables, hand trucks, hurricanes. Somewhere, this has got to be stopped, in my estimation.
You'd have to get rid of ag to do that, but.
Well, let's, why don't we do that? Why don't we get rid of ag? It's not.
It's the county's call, not ours.
I'm sorry, Mayor, but nothing is further from the truth. All you have to do is make a phone call. I can give you the telephone number if you wish. Boy, that was fast. Am I done?
Time, there's the clock.
You got fifty seconds.
Okay, I won't.
I don't usually go back and forth, so go ahead.
Yeah, okay, well, anyway, there's a, I've run a couple of rats back in there. There's a very, when the air is heavy, there's a stink of rotting wood, which there obviously would be. This is not just for me, it's my whole neighborhood. The, the missiles, that, that's a concern, the fire is a concern. And again, you can ask any fireman if there's combustion there and they'll agree. But as far as the guy's ag exemption, well, he's got to make a living. I'm not after his ag exemption. But stop the dumping, please. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kalas. Mr. Sears was next, but he ceded his time. David Kozinski is the next speaker, followed by the final speaker in attendance, Jim Albritton.
David Kozinski, sixty-four-eleven, Hollity Trail. Talking about referring to the comp plan, future land use element. Fuel policy one-point-one-D states, land use adjacent to rural estate and rural ranch areas shall be compatible with such areas at the time of issuing a development order for a principal building. Now, this is concerning the property that's proposed to, it's been suggested, there's been a letter circulating about development along the southeast corner of Hancock and Griffin. I'm not opposed to putting houses in there. It's no problem at all. I'm actually supporting it. I hope they put in large homes. What is incompatible is putting rural estates, homes in there. The land use element states that it's adjacent to. Now, according to this map that I received from Russell, the adjacent properties are along East Palomino and Hancock Road. Now, what, what that means, that the properties to the south and to the west, those are zoned as rural ranches. And around rural estates, we do the following, we decrease the value of those adjacent properties zoned rural ranches. And promote my property owner on East Palomino or Hancock to sometime down the road decide my property is adjacent now to rural estates. And I want to develop my five-acre plot into now one-acre lots. Going to create a rolling effect of rural estates. And then one day, you know, the town has created like this connection of Griffin Road, the east and west. Now, what's going to stop a landowner on Hollity, on East Palomino, on Hancock from saying, you know what, my land is connected by this road and I want to subdivide my land into rural estates? Now, allowing rural estates will decrease the precious aquifer recharge lands that Mary Gay has spoken about here. The raw water is going to be directed through the canals, straight up into the canals. The properties to the east will, just like the properties on one-seventy-second. And those were bought by the same builder. And I think they bought excellent homes. The issue is rural ranches. That's what's in Sunshine Ranches. The settlement clearly has language of a hundred-and-twenty days. The settlement agreement clearly has language of 120 days. It's a significant, slightly tougher. Colton saw the last four blocks were covered, a ton per second. It's in, it's in the closing agreement. Yeah.
In person is Jim Allbritton.
Pardon? Would it be okay if I speak? Yeah, okay.
Council members, town staff, and fellow residents. My name is Jim-
Can you back away a little? We can't hear you, you're all buzzy. Back away from the mic a little.
Yeah, I said good evening to everyone, can you hear me now?
Perfectly.
Hi, good evening to everyone. My name is Jim Allbritton. I live at 5600 Southwest 166th Avenue. I'm here this evening to announce my candidacy for the District III council seat here in Southwest Ranches. I've heard over the past few months, a number of concerns from my fellow residents, and I can assure you those concerns are my concerns also. I intend to work as hard as I can to earn your votes so that I might help resolve those very concerns, excuse me, concerns that fellow residents have as your councilman. I appreciate your vote, and I thank you for your time, and have a great evening. Thank you.
Mayor, that concludes the speakers in public and chambers. We do have some speakers waiting virtually. If I may call on the first person, Mr. Joel CoCullen. Mr. CoCullen, did you wish to speak during the public comments portion?
I do, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Fantastic. I'll be very brief. I wanted to like go back and visit the already approved plan for the high school. So when we're looking at the letter that was sent out to the residents within a-
Excuse me, excuse me, this is the mayor. We can't go back and readdress that at this point in the game.
Yes, sir, I understand that. Well, if I could ask the council members to explain something in the photos. Let me be brief. The, it was talked about a residential portion that was in the picture, and it wasn't clear to me in what was sent out in the aerial photo, whether that was the portion that is on the western edge of the property, which would be north of the priest's homes, but yet south of the retention pond. Is that that parcel that is considered residential? That's my question, or is it otherwise? I'm just looking for somebody to clarify that.
It's another question and answer. You can call Jeff Cadem separately tomorrow at the office or something, and Jeff Cadems can clue that up for you.
I can do that, thank you for your time.
Yep.
Okay. All right, the next speaker, mayor, is Jim Lasky. Mr. Lasky, are you there?
Unmike yourself.
You have to unmute yourself, sir. Mr. Lasky, you have to unmute your mic or your phone.
Again.
There you go.
All right.
There you go. You have three minutes, sir.
Okay, Jim Lasky, 5780 Southwest 188th Avenue. What you've got going on there is you've got dilution. You're issuing more shares of ownership within Southwest Ranches. It's a simple business proposition here. You've got more owners now involved there for what? Marginal benefits. Your marginal benefits are being diluted by adding more social services, town services, and also you're screwing up the aquifer because you've only got so much water underneath Southwest Ranches, and you have only so much drainage capacity under Southwest Ranches. That's something that all of Florida is dealing with right now. I urge you not to, not to subdivide any more properties, whether they're in Sunshine Ranches, and don't allow these excessively built houses in country estates. We have too many small properties that, that can't stand it. As you guys know, there's a case involving a neighbor of mine, all right? They're almost at 7,000 square feet. It's just too much roof, and there's a lack of drainage on the property now, which I can prove. But anyway, that's another subject. Thank you for your time, but please, don't subdivide any more land in Southwest Ranches anywhere. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lasky. Okay, the last, looks like the last speaker is Elizabeth Eskenazi. Ms. Eskenazi, are you there? Ms. Eskenazi, do you wish to speak?
Unmute it, unmute it.
You have to unmute your phone or your computer.
You can do that, Russell, I believe.
No, I have to send her a request, and she hasn't accepted.
All right, I'm here.
There you go, we hear you.
Great.
Okay, so it has been circulating, oh, my name's Elizabeth Eskenazi, I live at 6521 Southwest 183rd. And it's been circulating on Facebook that there is a proposal for Hancock and Griffin Road to have a development done by Toll Brothers. Now, I don't disagree with, you know, them coming here and building on our land. That's fine. What I do disagree with is, you know, the parcels being smaller and having a spec home feeling in our rural community. I, I love my rural lifestyle, and we enjoy having enlarged parcels and, and having big homes, and having the horses be able to walk the streets and have animals, and, you know, that's why we came here. And when you have Toll Brothers and other developers that want to have these, you know, big homes, it's, it's fun, I guess, because you can do whatever you want with your property, but if you're allowing them to subdivide these parcels into smaller little parcels, it just, it steals the way that, the reason why we came here, and it, it takes away from our lifestyle, and it just removes the charm. If that's, if I wanted to live in Davie or in Weston, then, you know, that's the kind of homes that I would, I would buy, but not here in Southwest Ranches. So I urge you to not allow these subdivisions to come in and take away our lifestyle. That, but that's it.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Eskenazi. Mayor, that's the last speaker virtually.
Okay.
So we're up to-
Board report.
Board reports.
All right. Do we have any board report? Anyone online? All right. Council member, come in.
I'd like to jump in there.
Yeah, all right, Gary, ask me first.
Go ahead.
Oh, go ahead, Gary.
I said ladies first.
Oh, thank you, Gary. Um, just a couple of quick things. I'm, I'm glad to see everybody, everybody looks great. I am hiding out in another room. But I am here at town hall, and I'm doing fine. And am I scared of this virus? I'm scared of the virus like everybody. Do yourself a favor, read Bob's article, wash your hands, keep your distance, and, you know, just try to stay safe, and you should be okay. On another note, I know it's come up about the, the Toll Brothers and their, their building. And I know Keith can explain this better than anybody can, but, you know, there's a yin and yang in everything, be careful of what you wish for. The, the property is owned by the church, and they, they can build this and put a school, and the school size would probably end up larger than any school here in South Florida. And whatever the public wants, you know, I'm going to support it. But if you're asking my opinion, I would rather see homes in there than a school that we really don't get any tax base from. And Griffin Road is going to be pummeled with traffic. It's bad enough now, it's going to get worse if the, if the sale of this wouldn't go through, or they would decide not to build because they don't want to put in two-acre home sites. So maybe, before we're done with this, Keith can explain how it works. And that's about all I have to say.
Gary, you're up.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody, for listening, coming. You know, it's, it's a pleasure to be here. We've been virtual for the last two, two, three months, and this is kind of nice to see everybody. Just one quick announcement, we have hazmat at the barn, at the park, on the 11th of July, from 8:00 to 2:00. And we have shredding.
Yay!
Shredding, but it's, but it's a very tight window. When the shredder's going to be there, it's going to be from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. It's a three-hour window. So if you're going to take advantage of it, make sure you're there. You know, it's real quick and easy, and, you know, touchless and all that other stuff. So just want to make sure, make sure everybody has, understands that. A couple things, and I guess this is more for Keith than, he can, he can probably explain this, if you could, Keith, in legal comments. They've been, my wife has told me that there's been a lot of chatter about new residents-
Gary, you got to back up from the mic, I can't hear you at all.
Okay, sorry.
Thank you.
I'm deaf, remember?
That's all right.
That's right.
I got to hear my own voice. There's been a lot of, a lot of chatter, my wife has been telling me on social media regarding new residents coming in with their property taxes. And I was wondering if you could, like, piggyback on top of what Marty Care were selling and drill down a little bit on that in your legal comments. And the other thing is regarding the New Testament Baptist Church and the agreement from several years ago. I was wondering if you could go through the history of that.
Elaborate.
Elaborate on that. And basically, that's all I have right now, Mayor.
Okay. Delsa? Go right ahead.
Uh, yeah. One, I know, I was listening just to Mr. Kalas, just real quickly, and I, I just want to get a clarification from anyone at any time, but is ag exemption, or does an ag exemption allow for chairs or whatever the items he was talking about above ground to be able to be moved by excessive wind, i.e. the hurricane, or something like that? I mean, can anything be on an ag property and no one can restrict? I mean, is it an anything goes type of deal? That's the question I have, and that can be answered at any time. Something came to my attention, and it's coming in the mailboxes. And it is something that is not from Broward County, it is not from the state of Florida. But it's coming, and it's saying that they don't see you, whoever you are in the mail, that gets the mail at that address, as being a registered voter. And then it continues to say that they have taken the moment to fill in some of the information on this, and all you have to do is fill in the rest and send it off. When hearing that, I found out I got one also. And it came to Delsa Allen Ammonson. Well, Delsa's my first name, Allen is not me, and Ammonson is my last name. It had the proper address. I don't vote as an Ammonson, I vote as a Winslow. But you need to be aware that the research that we've done, this is a nonprofit organization attempting to get people to fill these things out. Supposedly NPR had a, a program having to do with this group, and they are trying to get women and minorities to register to vote. I always have a tendency to extrapolate to the end. And I think if I had not noticed anything or read it carefully, I think there's already a voter's registration card somewhere with Delsa Allen Ammonson's name on it at my address, just ready to go into the hands of someone who really shouldn't be voting at all. So I wanted to make people aware of this, because if your neighbors are getting it, and they think, "Oh, whoa, I didn't register to vote," or "They don't think I'm registered," and they fill this out, it'll go all the way to the wrong people. There are also some little postcards, I noticed, that they're asking if you want "Vote My Mail." Yeah. And as a flight attendant for almost 23 years, every now and then, I voted by mail, but it was called absentee ballot. And I had to prove who I was, where I was, and that I was a registered voter. So I just wanted to make people aware of it. I think I'm going to try and get a copy or something like this in the next newsletter, because it really, if you don't read it or pay attention, it's asking for a lot of information. I think it's going to the wrong people. So I just wanted to make people aware of it. And a guy named Lionel Drips is the one who signs it. And he drips all right, but I just wanted to make people aware, and hopefully, we'll get a picture of it on our newsletter that goes out in July, I gather, because we're a little late yet, but I wanted to make you aware. That's all.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So, a couple things. Regarding the Toll Brothers, well, I should say the, the church property, Toll Brothers don't own it. There, I, I've been watching social media for, for a while now, really since the pandemic started, and just trying to put good information out there for people, you know, as, as things come up that I see may be helpful. I wanted to mention, because I know there's a bunch of people that I'm seeing as attendees right now that are pretty active in the discussion on, on Facebook. Facebook isn't a place that I can discuss my opinions on these things or, or really turn around and, and make recommendations and all those sorts of things. And I want to tell you why. I, I have to restrict my comments to public meetings. Like this, specifically this. Because if I start droning on and raving on about how I think, how I feel about that particular deal, I'm actually breaking the sunshine laws. And I don't need that. So I will restrict my comments to this forum, because this is the appropriate and legal place for me to do so. Now, regarding this, 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 this plan by Toll Brothers, let me speak on their behalf just for 30 seconds, and I'm not, this isn't a pitch. They're developing around town, and they've been good partners with the town previously. So my hope is that they're hearing and seeing all the emails. I know the lawyer from them, from, I can't think of her name off the top of my head, but their attorney is getting emails from lots of residents, because I think the whole council is, is CC'd on the notes that are going to her, and I'm glad people are doing that. What we've seen in other areas are they listen to the community and they respond. Now, they are developers, and they are going to try to maximize their profit on the property, which I don't blame them, but whatever they want to do has to be compatible with the neighborhood. And as a person who lives in rural ranches, that's what my, my area is, and my backyard backs up to three properties, because it's in Pembroke Pines, it's that little sliver that Ronnie carved out about 20 years ago, just before we became a town and built Durango Estates. I've got, you know, three neighbors across the back. One's a great neighbor, the other two, I wish I only had the one guy, because they're not that good a neighbor. So I understand. I mean, if, if there's going to be three houses behind you, it's not the same as what you have across the street from you. I'm, I'm really hoping Toll Brothers comes around on this, or they're going to walk away from the deal. I mean, if, 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 if they can't get what they want, then this won't happen. I can say right here, I would not vote, and we need a 5-0 vote in our, on the council to approve a conversion from community facilities to rural estates. So, you know, I'm, I'm here to say now, I'm, I'm going to listen to what they have to say, but if they come in there and say, "We want to put 41 rural estates on there," well, that's the end of the discussion, because that's, that's, you know, obviously, we'll go further, but I, I would never, I wouldn't vote for converting that whole area to 41 lot, 41 lots. Now, their argument's going to be it's already rural estates on, what is it, the east end? Well, we'll talk about that. But I really want to protect the character of the community. I really don't want to see that area converted to, to, you know, higher density than the rest of the adjoining neighborhoods. It, it doesn't make a lot of sense to me. So, you know, I, I support the residents, and I also support transparency on this. Again, you know, Facebook, people go in circles, people have all these, I've, I've seen a lot of conspiracies out there. I think it's the nature of our times. But, you know, I want the town to participate, I want everything to be in public. I want to make sure, you know, I'll assure, no backroom deals here, that can't happen. I do want to address the thought of backroom deals, because I saw a lot of things, again, on Facebook that said, "Oh, nobody in Sunshine Ranches was alerted that this was happening back in 16 and 17." For those on the phone today, we discuss this stuff at our meetings all the time. This goes back to 13. I sat through those meetings, I have pretty good recollection of what went on. The way to learn is, is through these meetings. If, if there's going to be a change, people are notified here. The town doesn't have a responsibility to start calling people and say, "Hey, come down and listen, you need to monitor our agenda, you need to stay on top of that." But back to transparency, I want to make sure everybody understands what's going on. So if Toll Brothers is going to have a meeting, attend. Be reasonable, be frank, be, be polite, but show up. As the town starts to work through this, which if Toll Brothers decides to go through with it, then come to the meetings. We won't be personally inviting you, these meetings take place the same time every month, two meetings a month. This is the place to come and learn about what's going on. If you don't like what you're hearing, as you guys have been doing, contact your council members, we listen. So I just wanted to put that out there. You know, I don't support Toll Brothers, they've been good partners, like I said, but every deal stands on its own. If we don't like what they're doing, we won't allow it to happen. So those are my comments on Toll Brothers. I was also, one other thing that popped up, I'm sorry, I had one other comment on Toll Brothers. I heard or, or read or something that, "No decisions to be made till after Election Day." I don't know if that's such a good idea, I don't remember where that came from, because I've talked to a bazillion people, and I've also read a ton of things. But if, if, if Toll Brothers wants to move forward on this quickly, and they go through the process, and everybody's in agreement with what they want, this should happen on, on a schedule that delivers it for a whole lot of reasons, sooner rather than later. I don't want to see any artificial barriers set up that would further delay the process. And, and on transparency, you know, we, we spent a lot of time on a landscape ordinance, literally over a year discussing that. I don't know where that is, so perhaps Andy, you can give us an update on that. And then the other item that is, that, you know, I'm very interested in is, you know, the town's property off of Sheridan Street that I believe is industrially zoned, the former CCA property. Andy, maybe you can give us an update there as well, because it seems like they've stopped, at least to me. I'm sure you're working on them, or I'm sure something is going on there, but maybe you can give us an update on those two items. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay. All right, my turn. Just a couple of things I want to say. I want to thank the public that came out tonight, thank you, it was great seeing everybody. Those of you that joined us over the internet, thank you for joining us. Hopefully, this will get better and if- Hopefully this will get better in the future and we can do better. But the governor has signed a, what is it he signed? Executive order to continue through the end of July to be able to have virtual meetings. So I don't know how July is gonna go, but I think the next two meetings may be virtual. I just want to give everybody a heads up. So plan for it. Get your computers lined up, your bandwidth turned on, so everything runs smoothly for you in participating. The other thing I want to mention, and it is an election year, we've had some people say some comments and stuff. So I'll state, I'm running. The election is in November, November 3rd. And Delsa, a colleague that is up here on the council, is also running. And DeShaw is also running. So those of you, I just want to give you a heads up that three of us are running and we do have opponents, and that's all good. And look forward to a nice, clean, fun election. So thank you very much. I appreciate it. And I'm gonna switch over to legal comments.
Sure, Mayor. Try to answer some of the questions that were asked and bring up a couple of other issues. The town has a couple of legislative items this year. The one bill relating to annexation has been submitted to the governor. So we should know by June 30th what occurs with that bill. At this point, it's been quiet, so I like to say no news is good news, but you never know in Tallahassee. Other things of significant importance that we found out this week, and I emailed everyone, we learned that Broward County has received an unsolicited offer to develop its property out west that was originally slated for a 4,000-bed correctional facility. We have no knowledge of what was proposed there because there's a cone of silence on the issue, but we are using our intelligence as much as possible to find out what was proposed. But right now Broward County is, has opened a procurement to receive other offers to see what someone wishes to develop on that property. Clearly, that property is significant in size and will impact residents out west, including Pembroke Pines out west. And as such, we will remain vigilant to try to find out what Broward County has planned for that property. A couple of items before I directly answer the questions that were asked. The Broward County, as everyone knows, and Dade County is becoming incredibly strict on the necessity to wear masks. We have received an ILA and our local agreement from Broward County, which they submitted to every municipality, which basically mandates that the municipalities have to ensure that the businesses within the municipality are buying by their regulations, which mainly is mask, social distancing, posting of notice, et cetera. The county is paying the municipalities to enforce the mask regulation, so it's supposed to be a break even point. But this is coming from Broward County as a means of trying to slow down the pandemic. In regards to another thing just to bring up, in the wake of the pandemic, a lot of people may not have gone online or responded in any way to the census. I just want to bring that up because I know I completed my own census. Please make sure everyone you know in the ranches submits its census forms. It's vitally important when people talk about taxes and revenue to the municipality, that is solely determined by the census. So everyone does need to respond. One thing that I do want to mention, when I went on and did it, it actually shows that we live in Fort Lauderdale. It doesn't say Southwest Ranches, it says Fort Lauderdale. But Andy has assured me that they break that out later so that the monies do go to the town of Southwest Ranches. So I just want to mention that as well. In regards to property tax of a new resident, Councilmember Jablonski asked me to look into it, that a new resident posted something apparently on social media saying that she was paying an excessive amount of money for taxes. And I was provided with the post, and there were responses to the post speaking about portability and the like, and I was asked to research the issue. The resident, who's a new resident to the town, owns the property in the name of a corporation. Okay? Straight out trying to own a property in a means that would create their own tax shelter. Well, once you do that, once you own a property in a corporation, you no longer can get homestead exemption, portability, or anything. Inside your property tax will increase year after year after year, and you have no exemptions. But even when that person complaining about their property taxes being high owned in a corporate name, that property owner actually only pays about $3,000, $3,300, I think to be precise, in town of Southwest Ranches taxes. Because under total tax bill, only 20 some odd percent, Andy, you can correct me, 22% something around that nature, actually goes to the town of Southwest Ranches. So to that new resident who was complaining about her taxes, it's very simple. Put your property in your name, get your homestead exemption, get any other exemptions that you can, lock your taxes in and your value in, get your portability from your prior home, and you can try to reduce your taxes that you pay through that means. I was also asked to quickly address the New Testament church issue. By way of background, and it's important to note, there is no application pending before the town of Southwest Ranches. None. Instead, we had the developers' legal counsel contact the town and said, I would like to have a meeting with the residents. That's what they said. And it was all response to them was very clear. We said, listen, you need to meet with the HOA and the residents virtually because I don't want anyone to feel uncomfortable not being able to go to the meeting. And if you ask them, I gave them David Kozinski's phone number, and I'm sure she reached out to David Kozinski. And then we told them that they needed to have a virtual meeting so that anyone in the town who has an interest in this item would be able to speak. So that's how this item started getting generated, which is they called us and said that they wanted to meet with the HOA, and our response was go through David, but meet with absolutely everyone. So that's how that started. So in regards to the property itself, and it's important to understand this, it really, this whole issue started probably because of Rolling Oaks. And this is what happened by way of history for anyone who doesn't remember. But there were a lot of residents here fighting, so you would think that most of them do remember. Rolling Oaks had a church at the entrance of Rolling Oaks, and Gary, please correct me if I'm wrong. And they came in with a major, essentially redevelopment plan. And when they came in for a redevelopment plan that would add significant amount of development to that church, immediately Councilmember Jablonski said, what do we need to do to prevent the maximum overall development of these CF institutions throughout the town? That as of right, they can develop way too much of their property, and it would have a significant impact on the town. At that point in time, I told Councilmember Jablonski, listen, we can amend the zoning code to reduce the amount of overall development that these community facilities can have. But, you know, please be advised, under the Burt Harris Private Property Act, if someone challenges that, we could be in a little bit of trouble here because by law, you have to pay for the diminution in their property value. So if someone could build a million square feet and you reduce them to 300,000 square feet, you're legally allowed to do that, but you got to pay for that 700,000 square feet reduction. That's how that works. Okay? So we went ahead and started a, essentially zoning in progress in which we developed the new code, I think, Jeff, you drafted it, in which we went across the town, not just New Testament, but every CF property in the town, and we said, we're going to reduce your overall development footprint to ensure that it is not a tremendous mass on these huge community facility properties. The response to that was very severe in terms of meetings after meetings of community facility owners and residents coming out before the town in opposition to our goal of reducing the overall development. It also made a lot of community facilities seek to vest their rights on what they could develop. One of those community facilities happened to be New Testament. New Testament submitted to the town a site plan. I don't know, Russell, do you have that site plan queued up?
Yes, sir.
Just for the general public, if anyone wants to see it. So New Testament submits this site plan to the town. And as you can see, it's a full buildout of their property of approximately 931,000, 095 square feet of community facility uses. In this site plan, they have, including in their field, they have residential, which we told them wasn't allowed, so they said it was ALF, which is allowed under community facility. It has expanded school, classrooms, meeting rooms, entrance gathering halls. It is probably one of the largest community facility projects that you would find in this area. This is what they submitted. No one can't forget this. This is what occurred in 2000, I think it was 16, which is what they said they wanted to build in the ranches. So I want to make sure everyone realizes that. So despite the fact that this was their site plan and they were represented at that time by Berger Singerman and a former Cooper City Commissioner named Russell Setti, and they proposed this development in the town, and the residents in the area went crazy. They said, we don't want this. We need to stand firm and adopt our regulation to prevent this from occurring. The town council unanimously approved the second reading of the zoning change to reduce the amount of overall square footage that any community facility could build. When they did that, just by way of New Testament only, because it affected all of them, they went from 931,000, 095 square feet of buildable area to a reduced number of exactly, it's 308,000 and change, approximately 309,000 square feet of buildable area. So we reduced their overall building area by 600,000 square feet. Okay? Huge reduction. Okay? Huge, huge reduction. The amount of traffic associated with that is, you know, enormous. So what happened after that? New Testament immediately filed litigation against the town. They hired an attorney named David Mancuta and a whole other slew of attorneys, and they started litigation against the town. Basically, their point was, under the Burt Harris Act, very simple. You can reduce us by 600,000 square feet, but you have to pay for the reduction. That's what it told the town, which would be an enormous sum of money for anyone who knows about development and development footprints. Instead of agreeing to pay New Testament for the reduction, the council met with them in numerous public meetings. In fact, you know, I heard Councilmember Hartman mention it before. It was discussed at the April 14, 2016 meeting. It was discussed at the April, August 25, 2016 council meeting. It was never discussed in the shade. There was never a shade session. Instead, it was meeting after meeting before the council. And finally, on October 13, 2016, a settlement agreement was brought before the council and was debated at length in which the council agreed to transition their vacant property, their 40-acre-plus vacant property, to rural estates to allow them to get back the financial amount of their investment, which would enable them to have one acre lot. But I drafted the settlement agreement. I did. So I did put a clause in that settlement agreement that was clear. And it said, if you do not come forward within one year, essentially 120 days, but it was basically one year, of the time that we approved this, that portion of the settlement agreement is null and void, and you do not get your one acre lots as of right. It's no longer as of right. Well, guess what? They didn't come forward. And as such, they lost their automatic opportunity to get one acre lots on that property. But I just want everyone to know that, you know, today, it's community facility. Today, as of right, they could build another 309,000 square feet. That would mean their total cumulative square footage on that property would be equivalent to, very close to Cypress Bay High School. It would be very close to the size of Cypress Bay High School to be built on that property. The traffic would be enormous, you know, if it ever got to that capacity. So although this item is not before you, I wanted to give you all a historical background to show where we are. Okay? But we are at an even playing field right now. At some point, the residents will have to make a decision on whether or not they support their property right, which is what they're allowed to do as of right, which is 309,000 additional square feet of, or total square feet of community facility.
That we can't do anything about right now.
That's as of right. Or whether or not the community wishes to make a deal with the property owner to enable them to sell it. You know, and that's something that will have to be decided by the greater public in the council in the future. Today, it's an equal playing field. There's nothing as of right on that property except for the reduced amount of total square footage that they can build there. So the settlement agreement did exactly what it was supposed to do. It reduced their overall development footprint and doesn't give them anything but that reduced development footprint. So that's the basis of the New Testament settlement, where it stands, and why today you can do whatever you want concerning the future of that property. Before I move on to the next issue, does anyone have any questions about New Testament? I meant the council, but it's up to the mayor if he wishes.
David, go ahead, you can.
Thank you. David said, good job. That was the best question I've ever got. Any other questions about New Testament? Okay. Seeing none, the, let me see my notes. Is there anything else I need to speak about? Nope. That is all I'm gonna go over to.
Any litigation with Pembroke?
Yeah, you know, the litigation with Pembroke Pines is virtually at a standstill because CCA is still in the Court of Appeals with Pembroke Pines. The only litigation that has reared its head is the Layfield litigation. And just to remind the public what that is, a gentleman who's on the list of being a sexual offender desires to live in a portion of the town, which we believe is not legal because of the location of a school bus stop to that location. And as such, he has challenged the legality of our ordinance that restricts him from being in close proximity to a school bus stop. So that litigation is going forward. We filed the motion to dismiss, but they are litigating that one pretty hard. So other than that, Mayor, thank you for the time, and everyone stay safe.
Awesome. Thank you, Keith. Greatly appreciated. And Mr. Burns?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just a few things very briefly. But first, I do want to commend Russell and Full Moon, our consultants, because we weren't sure how tonight was gonna go, doing a virtual and live meeting hybrid like this. So the fact that we've been able to pull it off is certainly a testament to their efforts and their preparation. I want to thank them for that.
Thank you, gentlemen.
The Councilmember Hartman had asked me for an update on nursery ordinance, and I had put that on hold. And the reason I put that on hold is, as you all recall, there was a lot of community concern and a lot of community input over that. There were a lot of discussions. We spent a lot of time on it. I think we had reached in February, March, we had reached a point where I think we had incorporated all the residents' concerns, all the council members' concerns, and I really think we had it done. But at that point, we stopped having public meetings, and I put it on hold because I didn't want to create a situation with the residents where we were potentially trying to put an ordinance through undercover of darkness. You know, there are a lot of people who came out for those public meetings, had a lot of input in the process. We respected that. We honored that. But I wanted to, what I was trying to do was hold it until we went back and met in person again, without knowing what the schedule was gonna be. Recognizing that COVID cases are on the increase, we're up to 20 in town right now. As you said before, Mayor, the governor has extended his executive order allowing us to have virtual meetings. It's my anticipation that both meetings during the month of July will be virtual, but I will, I will bring that nursery ordinance through again.
At some point.
And no, we'll schedule for first reading at the second meeting in July. It's, you know, it's, I think it's ripe. It's ready for your consideration. But we'll make sure the public knows it's out there, and we'll promote that meeting agenda appropriately. I think Councilmember Hartman also asked about the CCA site. We are finalizing that agreement. We're ready to give it to the other side for their consideration. The one last thing we were doing was looking at our bank loan on that, and I know Marty was meeting with the bank to see if we could get some more favorable terms. So we were trying to finish that process before we turned it over. Last but not least, I had, I did have email all of you, but I do want to put it on the record, tonight, we've been working with our consultant on the fire assessment study. We are going to schedule a virtual meeting for 7:00 PM next Tuesday night, which will include a presentation from our consultant and will allow you the opportunity to ask some questions. and will allow you the opportunity to ask some questions and and address any concerns you have. The draft copy has been furnished to you. We will also, for that virtual meeting, will notice it properly. But we will also invite the Fire Assessment Review Committee to participate in that process as well on Tuesday evening. And I think that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you very much.
Okay, yep. All right. Next, yeah, next, exactly. Russell, I guess we're up to that on thirteen, bud.
Yes, Mayor.
Ordinance second reading.
Ordinance second reading. This is an ordinance of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, amending ordinance two thousand and two dash zero zero five in the town's comprehensive emergency management plan and adopting a new continuity of operations plan in order to minimize human and property losses and to preserve the continuance of the town's municipal essential operations in the event of a natural or manmade disaster. Authorizing the mayor, town administrator and town attorney to approve the plans and providing an effective date. This was approved on first reading, June eleventh.
Motion, second please. All right, you got who that was?
Yep.
Russell?
I have it.
Okay. Any public comment on this matter? Any, anybody raising a hand or anything?
No, Mayor.
Nobody? All right. Any comments back to the council? Anybody have any additional input? All right. Seeing then, call the question.
Councilmember Amundson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroeder?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item fourteen, please.
Item fourteen is an ordinance on first reading. This is an ordinance of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, amending the town of Southwest Ranches Code of Ordinances by creating chapter nine, entitled Noise, to establish standards for the acceptable levels of noise and to prevent nuisances that may adversely affect the quiet enjoyment and quality of life expected by town residents, providing perseverance and providing an effective date.
Motion, please.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Mayor, if I may.
Go right ahead, Keith.
Sure. First off, you know, to begin this discussion, I would truly want to thank so many residents who helped in in pushing us to get to this point. Can't name all of them, but you know, Michael Spitzer has been incredibly valuable. Lori Parrish has been incredibly valuable in in helping us to craft something that would work within the town. So let me start with the, the greater goal of what we were trying to accomplish and how we got to where we are today. The goal was that we all live in a community where we are to enjoy our properties, our large acreage, at peace without nuisances of noise that are not common and commonplace to the ranch's way of life. Okay? That was the goal. How can we live at peace indoors and outdoors of our home without being inundated with non-rural noises? Okay? The current laws of Broward County that was adopted by the town when the town came into creation had an eleven P M. cutoff. Basically, you could be annoyed all day long with noises in your backyard, but the minute it turned eleven P M., then that noise was supposed to stop. That lasted a long time, until probably the last three or four years, where the amount of music and parties and vacation rentals and Airbnbs and all these other new ways of life came into the town. And now, for the first time ever, the town gets calls during the day, you know, all day long, especially the weekends, by people complaining about sounds coming from their neighbor. And in time after time, they're not even registered because we say, unless it's eleven P M., there's nothing we can do. Because that's what the county regulation says, eleven P M. So there was a, a major push by the residents who said, listen, we need to be able to enjoy our quality of life all day long. It's not just eleven P M. where we need to enjoy our life. It's all day long. So the first thing we did was we looked at neighboring ordinances such as the town of Davie. Michael Spitzer, who's probably listening to the meeting, will tell you that the town of Davie's ordinance i- is pretty poor. And the reason why it's pretty poor is it's based on a decibel level reading. And a lot of times, the decibel level readers don't and can't pick up certain sounds that are considered nuisances. In addition to that, from a legal perspective, if a officer or code officer either A. doesn't have a decibel reader or B. isn't trained to use a decibel reader, that violation will be thrown out by a court on a continuous basis and it doesn't work. So as a result of that, we immediately ditched the idea of going from a decibel reading, seeing the fact that our neighbors could barely even enforce that themselves. So instead, we had to look at, okay, well, what, what do we do to make an ordinance that everyone could live with and be happy with and and make the community what we all want it to be? So at that point, it was determined, okay, listen, you know, there's something in the law called the reasonableness standard. Okay? Seems to work, you know? Some people may not like it, but beyond a reasonable doubt, it's been around a pretty long time, you know? And so what we decided was, listen, we're gonna use the same legal standard that is found throughout the country on a continuous basis and say, listen, if you are what we call the receiving property, which is the property that is hearing the noise, and if you, you call a code officer or a police officer and they come on your property any time of the day, okay, any time of the day, and they hear that noise and they agree that a reasonable person would consider that noise to be a nuisance or destructive to your rural way of life, that noise can stop, that person can be told to stop that noise, lower the noise, and they can be cited accordingly. Okay? Any noise. So now you start with the basis of the law that basically says, okay, if a receiving property receives a noise that is creating a nuisance and a reasonable person finds it to be a nuisance, that noise can stop and that person can be cited. So what do we do next after that? Well, you can't write a regulation that lists every single noise that can or cannot occur. It's impossible to do so because you're always gonna leave some off the list. So instead, what we did is we listed the key exceptions to that rule of living in town of Southwest Ranches. Well, so what is an exception? Obviously, farm animals. Okay? Farm animals are part of the way of life of the town, so they were immediately put in there as an exception. I heard one of the council members called me and said, why did someone in social media put that roosters are being restricted by the noise ordinance? And my response was clear, that person doesn't read. Okay? Because one of the absolute first restriction comments says that farm animals are not covered by this ordinance. Farm equipment, not covered by this ordinance. Okay? Lawn equipment, not covered by this ordinance. So we left all of the normal noises that we hear on a continuous basis in a rural community as ones that are exceptions to the overall rule. So what is this ordinance really aimed at? It's aimed at stopping the loud music, the loud parties, the amplified noise that are not common or traditional to a rural lifestyle. I was then asked a question recently, why fireworks? It's state fireworks. You know, the, the governor passed a law that said you can have fireworks on the Fourth of July and the list of municipalities says otherwise. To me, fireworks is a noise. Okay? Any noise that you hear on a receiving property that a reasonable person would find to be a nuisance is a nuisance and can be stopped. We were not listing every noise. And people speak about fireworks, well, sparklers under the law is defined as a firework, but that doesn't make noise. So clearly, the goal wasn't to stop all fireworks. It was only the ones that made loud noises that could impact someone's way of life or an animal's way of life. So as a result, we developed this ordinance and and truly was a community effort, and I thank everyone for their insight and help, to create an ordinance that did exactly what the residents wanted, which was give them their quality of life twenty-four hours a day and that anyone could enforce, whether it was Julio or the Police Department or anyone. Anyone would know and come out to a property and say, you're right, that noise is offensive. Let me have your neighbor turn it down. And sometimes you would think it would be easy to go to a neighbor and ask them to turn down their noise. It's noisy and it doesn't happen regularly. The two other caveats I want to put in this ordinance are as follows. There are times and occasions where someone's going to have a party, a wedding, a, you know, a special occasion at their home when they want to have noise and the noise may be extended beyond their property line. Well, our code already provides for that. And it says that you can get a permit from the town to have a party at your home. So what do we require in this ordinance? If you want to have a party at your home, whether it stops at eleven P M., one A M., whatever the, the deal is, provided that the town administrator says, I'm okay with this. You're only allowed, I think it's two parties a year, you know, as of right. I'm okay with this, but then what do you do? You take that permit, you put it on the front of your property. Why do you do that? Because you're telling your neighbor, see, this is one of my two parties I can have a year, you know, with amplified noise. Everyone knows what it is. Everyone knows when it's gonna start. Everyone knows when it's gonna be stopped. And there's not more of that fighting going on between neighbors about when they're gonna stop their noise. So truly, we felt that this was a comprehensive reform, that it will be enforceable. Andy, myself, Russell, had a very large meeting with code and P D. and we brought it up. And I, I, and I really think that it was universally seen as positive, especially by the Police Department, because they don't need to run around with special devices in their car and get extra certification just to determine if a noise exceeded a certain decibel, which they have to do today. So it is a, a, here for first reading. If you need to think of anything that need to be tweaked in it, it's, it's for you for consideration. But again, thanks to everyone who helped put this together and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, yep. Great delivery, Keith. Great delivery. Anybody have any additional questions?
Keith, I got one or two.
Well, the public wanted to go. You want them to go first?
Oh, no, no, let the public go. Sorry.
It's all right.
David Kuzensky.
Hold on a minute.
Kuzensky, sixty-four eleven Hollaty Trail. Just because I don't like sidewalks. I would suggest pulling out of paragraph seven, substituting road for sidewalk. Just because I don't like sidewalks. That's it.
Yeah, but we do have sidewalks.
Where's that?
I've been out of states.
Okay.
So that's why.
That's right.
Griffin Road. Yeah, Griffin, there were several roads.
All right. You got me. You got me. I, I, I think I ventured out there maybe once.
Okay. All right, we have a few, Mayor.
Go ahead, online.
Okay, first, Jim Lasky. Mr. Lasky, do you wish to speak on this item?
I'm sure. Okay. I've got, I've got a situation next to my house. Okay? Right next to my house. Three point nine feet from my property line, there is a one and a half horsepower pump hooked up to a water purification equipment, which is a water softener and some other items. Okay? The same person has been permitted to install a generator. Not yet, so I can't tell you exactly where it's located. But let me tell you something, guys. All right? I know all about generators, as you know. A generator on wheels, okay, doesn't require any permit. You just roll it up. I can have any size generator I want in my driveway. But we don't do that around my neighborhood. We respect everybody else. In the front of your properties where I live, and I'm sure you're all familiar where I live, okay? We worry about how it affects other people. Matter of fact, Broward County Building Code says you're supposed to have shop drawings and a whole evaluation on where the generator is located, where the fumes end up in other houses. But I've got a person permitted right now, under the information that I sent you all today, with a boundary survey, if you remember your emails, okay, that allow this person to proceed. That's not exactly fair to me. So respect the setbacks that you've established. You know, my water purification equipment is probably a hundred feet behind my house. In the, in between the area of one property line and the other, the setbacks are probably thirty, forty feet. And I'm limited because I have a canal east that bends. But I don't want to hear the damn thing. I didn't want to fifteen years ago, but now I hear my next door neighbor. By the way, my water purification equipment.
Give me your time's up, I'm sorry.
Three quarter horsepower. Not one and a half horsepower.
Yeah, I apologize, but your time's up.
Okay, the next speaker, Mayor, is Michael Spitzer.
Okay.
Mr. Spitzer, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
There you go. We hear you.
Good evening.
Okay, Michael Spitzer, fifty-five ten, southwest one hundred and ninety-fifth Terrace. I just wanted to briefly voice support for this updated ordinance. It addresses a problem that has been increasing here in the ranches. We ourselves have lived here about twenty-one years and we never used to have any issues at all. But as Keith said, in the past three or four years, it has been a steady increase in frequent nuisance noises that we've seen. Far too often now, we'll be in our house trying to watch T V, read a book or sleep, and the boom, 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 boom will start up and keep going for hours, day and night. When I go outside to see where it's coming from, it may not even be a nearby neighbor or even on our street. Sometimes it's coming from two or three streets away. And you know, there's really no excuse for that kind of behavior. You know, I should mention also, it's not just one or two repeat offenders anymore. Now, every other weekend, it seems to be coming from some different direction. If you think about this for a minute, here in the ranches, we don't live in apartments with paper thin walls. We live on acreage of an acre or more. So if you're inside your own house and you're hearing a thump, thump, thump from neighbor's house, it must obviously be too loud. It's also especially a problem of somebody being excessively rude and inconsiderate if it's coming from two or three blocks away. Now, of course, yes, I have a right to listen to music out by my own pool. Of course we do. But I do not have a right to force my neighbor or all the other fifty houses that surround me to have to listen to it also. Basically, considering the amount of space we have out here, this would not be a problem if people behaved themselves with some common sense. The way I see it, you know, this did not used to be a problem in the past. Maybe people had better etiquette or consideration for others years ago. I know when I was a kid, my parents would tell me, you know, do not disturb the neighbors. But nowadays, it seems like people may not have as much regard. So we definitely need a way to ensure people give thought to making sure the noise they make is limited just to their own property and their own home and is not spread out and start disturbing and intruding all the others around them. So that basically summarizes why I support this.
Thank you, Michael. Time's up. Thanks for your contribution.
Okay, Mayor, that concludes all of the virtual speakers.
Okay. Anyone else? Seeing no one else, back to the council. Any comments? Bob?
Yeah, I had a couple for Keith. Not comments, but questions.
Okay.
So, so Keith, I remember the, the Davie noise ordinance and I agree with you. There were things that, in my mind, didn't make a lot of sense. You know, they, they had a limitation of fireworks within a thousand feet. Well, man, the stuff they shoot off near my house, you can hear that stuff for a mile. It's pretty powerful stuff. So I agree with pulling that out. I mean, noise is noise regardless of the source. I do have, I guess, a question in terms of enforceability. I'd, I'd hate to put a new ordinance in place that we find might bite us. You know, having in Davie's, I, I realize it's, it's a burden to have to worry about sound meters and all that sort of thing. But I worry that, you know, one, one person's noise is another person's music and, you know, if, if a neighbor doesn't like rap music or he doesn't like some ethnic music or music that they just don't like it, forget about where it comes from or, or who produces it. They could basically get a cop to agree with them and it comes across as relatively arbitrary and capricious because the people don't like the type of music. You know, the, the only benefit I see to the, to using a decibel level, and I, I understand the subsonic stuff doesn't register the same way, but if we ended up in court with somebody over this, you know, oh, they didn't like my music, that's why they're complaining. The cop agreed with them. The cop doesn't like music type X. And all of a sudden, we lose the case.
I, I, if there's a question, then I believe that the legal standard is fully appallable. Councilmember Hartman, you know, you're well aware, even.
Keith, can you back away? I can't understand anything you're saying.
Sure. Even land use law has a standard of fairly debatable. So those sort of standards are upheld routinely by a court, especially made, when made by a officer, a, a police officer or a code enforcement officer. There's no doubt in my mind that any enforcement of this will include a recording of the sound being heard at that time, which is standard for code enforcement and otherwise. And I do not have any doubt in my mind that we can sustain challenges based on the way this is drafted in court. Because it enables the officer to look at both the, the, the sound, the frequency of the sound, how loud the sound is, the time of day. the time of day that it's occurring, a- and also whether or not a reasonable person would consider that to be a nuisance, and it's not. Whether it's rap music or classical, it's any way, thing that would impact someone's way of life that another person would reasonably find to be objectionable. And, um, you know, just by way of background, uh, probably a year or so ago, uh, when, uh, Davie went through its ordinance, and, and I think you reminded me recently that you provided the town with a copy of it and, and strongly suggested that the town relook at its laws, and, and you were right. And, and when it came time to doing this, and, and people like Michael and others spoke up, it's when we looked at Davie's laws and saw tremendous shortcomings. So I believe that the way we drafted it will uphold, uh, withstand judicial scrutiny.
I have a question.
Thank you, counselor.
Go ahead, Keith.
Um, I understand where Bob was coming. It could be interpreted as discrimination against my music, but what's your definition of a farm animal? Does it include, uh, people that have twenty, thirty dogs on their property and they're barking all night?
A, uh, dog is not defined as a farm animal. A farm animal is defined pursuant to the Florida statute. It's directly in there, and, uh, as a result, we do not need to redefine it. It just goes with the statutory definition. Uh, we do have problems with, uh, dog barking. We didn't put that as an exemption in here. Uh, but, uh, you know, with those dog barking, it's not as frequently uh, that we get those complaints as we get complaints on music. It, it's very infrequent. Most dog owners, we find, bring their dogs in at night, even if they have several of them. But dogs still can, can create a nuisance, and we do get those complaints once in a while.
Okay.
Is a better term livestock than farm animals?
Um, I will look between first and second reading. It's an eight twenty-three Florida statutes, and just make sure that I use the exact word that they do. So.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll look at that, uh, tomorrow.
Alright, any additional questions? Seeing none, call a question.
Councilmember Amundson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes.
Okay. Next.
Good deal. Okay, the next item?
Fifteen.
Is item fifteen. Item fifteen is a resolution of the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, consenting to the city of Cooper City providing water service to the farmer's market located at one fifty-one fifty southwest one twenty-fourth Avenue, lying within the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, providing that no further expansion of service shall be permitted without the explicit written consent of the town, providing for a certified copy of this resolution to be furnished to the super, city of Cooper City, and providing an effective date. Motion approved.
Second.
Any public comment on this matter? Anyone raising their hand?
No one virtually, Mayor? No.
Okay. Any, uh, council member additional comments?
Yeah, a question on this one too. So, we're talking about the farmer's market that is on Flamingo Road. I guess, uh, just to the north of Archbishop McCarthy. It's, it's on the same property as Davie Feed, right?
That's correct.
Is that a legal business? I mean, are we doing this for a legal business?
Good question, Bob.
The, the, the question, whether or not Davie Feed is legal?
Not Davie Feed, the farmer's market.
Oh, yeah, but this is part of Davie Feed. Uh, it's on the Davie Feed property, the way I'm being told. Is that correct, Andy? Yeah. The, the way I understand it, uh, Councilmember Hartman, with Davie Feed way before the town. Okay, that today would not be deemed to be legal. But, uh, because of the fact that it provided a service for the rural community, uh, way back, probably in the nineteen eighties or earlier, uh, it was allowed to be there by Broward County. So, uh, the farmer's market goes along with their approved use or their vested use, uh, which is selling, uh, of goods that support a rural community. So, um, yes, it can be argued that a farmer's market, uh, would be a legal use, uh, but then again, if the council told me otherwise, um, I'm sure I could fight either direction.
But now, I think, uh, I think the, uh, farmer's market is a tenant of Davie Feed. Are we providing water, or is Cooper City providing water to Davie Feed or to the, uh, to the farmer's market? Because this says farmer's market, and it's not Davie Feed. I believe the farmer's market is a tenant. They're not, uh, they're not part of Davie Feed.
I, I believe Bob is right. They are a tenant.
It, it, it's the property itself. So, yes, it's being provided for the farmer's market, and I know Rod could answer this better than me, Andy, but it's for the Davie Feed property.
Who's R and R Development Corp.?
Keith, that is correct. It is for the, for the property itself, and R and R developers are the owner of that property.
R and R Development Corp., is that part of Davie Feed or?
Yes, it is.
That's what I thought.
So is Davie Feed a tenant of R and R as well?
I don't know their corporate dynamic. R and R is the owner of the property, Davie Feed is there, and the farmer's market is going there. So, um, you know, I don't know their corporate structure. If you uh, are inclined to table it and want us to find it out, we're happy to do so.
Well, if, if they were a legal and legitimate business, then I wouldn't have any problem with it, but, uh, lots of things keep popping up on that property depending on which year it is. So if we're supplying water to R and R, that's probably what this resolution should say, not a tenant of the property itself. What's your thoughts, Keith?
Well, this R and R developer is the owner of the property.
Then I'm not clear on why we even have any reference to, uh, to Davie Feed, and not Davie Feed, I'm sorry. Um, to the, the.
Farmer's market.
Farmer's market, thank you, Dee.
Uh, definitely Rod, uh, would need to time in here because he's familiar with this application, and that's where I got the language from, so maybe Rod can address that.
Yeah, so, so, and this was, uh, the agreement was essentially prepared by Cooper City. Uh, so the, the reason that the, the reference is in there for, uh, well, R and R is obviously the owner of the property, that's why, and, and the address is obviously important because they are going to provide service to the address, you know, to the property itself. Um, but, but the farmer's market's there in reference because that's how they negotiated and talked to, um, um, Cooper City, uh, the, the actual farmer's market did, so that's why that language is in there.
But Councilmember Hartman, I, I see your point. There's absolutely no reason for that to need, needing to be in the header. So if you choose to adopt this, uh, uh, amend the header to remove the, the language, the farmer's market located at, and just have the address. And just, McKay, providing water service to five-one-five-oh, southwest one twenty-fourth Avenue.
That makes sense.
Yes.
Andy, you're shaking your head no.
No, I, I, I don't, Councilmember, I don't have a problem with that at all.
Okay.
A valid solution.
Thank you. That makes sense, Keith.
Alright, so do you want to change the motion?
So I need to amend my motion to reflect that?
Yes.
So be it.
Alright, a second or?
So be it.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Alright, no additional questions? Seeing none, call the question.
Council, Councilmember Amundson? Say yes, Councilmember Amundson?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Alright.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Gary.
You're welcome.
Thank you, folks, for everybody who is on the phone and in person.
Yeah, absolutely, thank you. Everybody have a, uh, great time, stay healthy, stay safe.
Uh, hey, Russell?
Yes.
Um, look at the header on page two seventy-five. And you'll see what I mean. Look at the council member names when you get a minute.
Okay. Yeah, I don't know why that, how that happened that way. Oh, I know why. When we crafted this, that was the header at the time. We'll, we'll fix that for a second.
Yeah, we, we kept leaving that slip through, and, uh, so Delsa's not giving credit for being on the council, and, uh, I don't know, I guess Gary liked being ma- vice mayor at the time.
This, this is how long it's been kicked down the road. This has been worked on for over a year, that's why. But we'll fix that. Thank you.
Thank you. Good night, folks.